Good evening. Welcome to our May 17 City Council Meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor John Lee from Zaris Church and that will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
Well, thank you for inviting me to today's invocation. Let us pray. Sovereign God, thank you for the month of May, the month of family wellness. And we thank you for our family, extended family, the spiritual family. While we are thankful for our family, also we think about those who lost their loved ones due to the violent crimes that had happened recently. And also the war situation that's happening in the other side of the world. And God, we just pray for your comfort and peace upon all those who are dealing with grief, sadness, and grief. And we want to thank you for our city of West Covina and all those who are serving this beautiful city. And we thank you for our leaders who lead, organize, plan, and execute. And Father, we also want to take time to thank you for those who work to keep this city safe and clean. We thank you for those who are working on the frontline, at the hospital, the hospital workers, the police officers, firefighters. We thank you for this very special community. And we pray for the peace and unity upon our community and our world. We lift those who are hungry, unemployed, and displaced. We pray for those who are dealing with sickness, the coronavirus and all other sickness. Lord, all these and all other burdens, we just lay them all at your feet. And as we start this meeting tonight, give each person a clarity, compassion, give them listening ears and thoughtful words. Let our transactional interaction be seasoned with grace, empathy, understanding, compassion. Give them a presence of mind and open heart. And we pray all this in the name of all names who is worthy of our glory, honor, and praise. Amen.
You face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabataba.
President.
Councilwoman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz is absent this evening. Mayor Costellanos.
Here. And there's nothing to report out of closed session. We didn't have one today. Which takes us to presentations, and we're going to have a few this evening. First one is going to be certificates recognizing the West Covina Police Department for the Baker to Vegas 2022 Challenge Cup Relay. So would you guys please come to the front and I'll meet you up there.
Dean Tessie.
We'll have you go first, Chief.
All right. Well, thanks everyone for being here. It's an honor for me to stand here. First of all, I want to say good evening, Council and citizens of West Covina. I'm Police Chief Richard Bell. You know, the last couple of years have been pretty tough for us and for all of us, not just police. And, you know, it's been a lot of downtime. We haven't been able to do a lot of things. And so this year, we've seen a lot of things open up. And one of the things that opened up for us again is the Baker to Vegas Relay Challenge Cup. It is really a special time for law enforcement. Yes, we're a law enforcement all over the country. Matter of fact, we've extended it even internationally where they come together and they race each other for pride, for strength, for a number of things. And I'm not going to do this justice, but I am going to turn the mic over to Officer Kenny Benitez. He is one of the captains this year. He helped organize it. And he'll just explain a little bit about what it takes and what we've done this year with the Baker to Vegas Relay Team.
Thank you, Chief. Just a little history about Baker to Vegas. It started back in 1985 with 19 teams. As we progressed in time, the races had grown to about 200 teams plus. And like the chief mentioned, it's worldwide. So we've got teams coming in from all over the place. The race consists of 120 miles and it's shared amongst 20 runners. So you can only imagine the tough, how tough this race is. It involves incline, heat, cold weather, decline. So this is a tough race. And this is a lot of work that our runners, which are sitting here to my left, put in a lot of work into it. The race is broken down into 12 different categories and it depends on the department's size. Our category for our team is 99 and under. Only the top three teams, only the top three teams per category are recognized on the podium at Baker to Vegas. So this year, the West Covina running team achieved third place for the 2022 race. So we were able to get recognized in front of everyone, in front of all the teams up in Las Vegas. Our team came close to first place, only 18 minutes away and four minutes away from our second place. Our final time for the race was 16 hours and 52 minutes. So that's very impressive for our team. And we're continuing to work hard. Our runners are already starting to work hard for the next race for 2023. I would like to thank the chief for allowing us to be here and racing and competing in this race. I apologize. I would like to thank our support staff for also being out there and helping out with the race. The runners for putting all that extra work that they do out there, not only keeping our streets safe, as well as putting in the extra miles to compete in this race. And lastly, I would like to thank all the sponsors that helped us out throughout the race as well.
Can I have the team just come up? I just want you guys to come up here. I had them come in. I know over the last few years, we've had a lot of new officers. Some of you may know some of them and some of them are extremely, extremely new. And I know Kenny kind of briefly explained too, but let me just explain. At 3:00 in the afternoon, we started that race on a Saturday morning. And I believe we finished at around 6:00 AM on Sunday morning. It is an all-day and all-night race. And I believe the temperatures reached above 90 degrees when we started. And I want to say well into the 50s, maybe even 40s at the height of the mountain portion. It is a grueling race and it is not for the faint of heart. But I want you to know that the West Covina team is made up of all West Covina officers. We had both male and female officers run. And I'm going to tell you, as a chief, I was extremely proud of this team. And I stood there at the end on the podium with them and it did my heart well. So I just want to say again, thank all of you for being there and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you to the team. Great job. Congratulations. Huge achievement. Before I present the West Covina certificate, I'd like to pass the mic to Julissa Zapata from Assembly Member Blanca Rubio's office.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Julissa Zapata. I'm with State Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. And I'm just here to congratulate you guys. I know that that's not an easy race to do. I've never done it myself, but I know other officers who've taken part in that event. So it just shows your dedication to not only our residents, but kind of the sacrifices that you guys make and the discipline that you guys have. And, you know, congratulations on your third-place accomplishment.
And who will accept the award? Do you have an award for? There you go, for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
From the city of West Covina. Thank you, guys. Great job. Keep it up. Lot to be proud of. Bring it in for a photo. And we have a proclamation for National Police Week, also from the city of West Covina. And I'll be presenting this to the chief. And it's in celebration of National Police Week on the 17th day of May, 2022. Thank you for everything you guys do, Chief. Anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. So in 1962, then-President Kennedy declared the National Peace Officers Memorial Day for the fallen officers. West Covina has three fallen officers and I'll go over their little bio in just a second, but I just want you to know that that's the ultimate sacrifice that you can make as a police officer. And every time I interview a new candidate, the one thing that they have to know is that not only is this a profession for service, but that one day, there's a chance that you may have to make that ultimate sacrifice. And yet, each and every one of our officers show up each and every day. One of the ways that we were able to honor our fallen officers, and I wasn't able to have the team here today, maybe we can do it in a future date, but last week, we had 10 of our officers participate in the Police Unity Tour, which is much like Baker to Vegas, but it's a bike ride, it's a challenge ride, and it's to honor the fallen officers. This ride consumed with about 2,000 officers. They rode for over 250 miles. The ride started in Somerset, New Jersey, and it ended at the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC. Unity Tour is dedicated to some 23,229 officers who made the ultimate sacrifice and gave their lives in the line of duty. The three officers that we have here that we are honoring is Officer Frederick Hamm. He was one of the first police officers here in the city of West Covina. His EOW, his hire date was January 1, 1938. His EOW date was on December 9, 1940, after he was involved in a traffic collision. Officer Jay Jackson was hired in West Covina as a police, for our police department in 1977. His EOW was on Saturday, January 14, 1978. His life ended after a pursuit and an encounter with a suspect where he lost his life due to a gunshot wound. And the third officer is Officer Ken Reedy. He was hired August 1, 1980. His EOW was August 31, 1983. And during a call for service and after a struggle with a suspect, he was also shot and wounded where he lost his life. I can't tell you how filled my heart is, how full my heart is. And it goes out every time we have to think about this ultimate sacrifice. I want to thank the city for lowering the flags at half-staff. It means a lot to our West Covina brothers, our West Covina Police Department. Thank you very much.
Chief, I have a certificate from Assemblymember Rubio for the police department and it reads, "I commend you for your dedicated service to the residents of West Covina. Thank you for working to keep our neighborhood safe, providing vital resources to our region, and participating in local events to continue building community relationships. And we also observed on Sunday, our fallen heroes and our hearts go out to their families." Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question for the chief. Chief, since you, okay, since you're over here, and I know so important for our public safety, and last year, okay, City Council approved 10 additional police officers, is not only to protect our residents, but also protect, okay, our officers, because we have enough of officers. But how is the hiring, because we know we have a lot of retirement, okay, and hopefully we can come out. And then last night, you kind of told me you have a recruitment. It's very successful. People want to work for West Covina. So maybe you can share with us what is the status current and how many officers we have? And maybe you can quickly introduce a lot of young officers that willing to work for us and willing to become our public safety defender. Okay, thank you.
I don't have my slide, but... I don't have my slide with me, but I'll do the best I can with the numbers. I believe it was June of last year where the council hired 10 additional officers for us to help protect the city of West Covina. Sorely needed. I've always proclaimed that we need more numbers than that, but we'll take the 10. And so the challenge was to get 10 new officers hired and on the street in a timely manner where our citizens can see the benefit of it. I'm happy to say right now that we started at 90. We are, as of today, at 100. So we were able to hire the 10 officers. That's on top of the officers that left. So are we seeing those 10 officers at work today? Not quite. Between the officers that left and the 10 that we hired, we still have 13 of them between training and the academy. And so until they're done with that, we won't see them on the street. And we probably won't see them until closer to late September, early October. And then we'll have a couple of more come in after that. But I want to say, we actually have our training manager here. Danny, come over here. You know, I was going to put him on the spot right here. And please forgive me for my voice, it kind of comes and goes, but Danny is our training manager. And when we got those 10 officers, he told me the night we got them, we're going to hire those 10 this year. 10 officers doesn't seem like a lot, but when you consider what goes into getting an officer hired through the academy, through the training, and on the street, it can take over a year if they're brand-new officers. Anywhere from four, three to six months if they're a lateral. So I just want to say to Danny and his team, he's done a tremendous job of getting those officers in here. We got some really quality officers. And as we approach September, October, you'll start to see and feel those numbers on the street, where we can start addressing those issues like response times and getting officers to cause a little quicker, because we'll have more bodies. So we're definitely looking forward to that. And I just want to thank the city for giving us those officers. And I want to thank Danny for certainly standing up to the challenge and getting those people hired. So what I'm going to do is, can you guys just introduce yourselves as I go down? These are officers that I've hired. I want to say, how many did I actually hire? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6? I think I hired 6 of the ones you see here. On our, I want to say in the last year, how many, how many have we hired in the last 21 officers, just in the last year, right? Out of 100, what is that? 20% of our force? That's a, that's a number of officers. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Officer Daniel Clements. I've been with the department for 11 months now.
I'm Officer Anthony Flores. I'm a lateral police officer. I've been with West Covina for about six months now.
I'm Officer Salas. I went with the department for 11 months now.
I'm Officer Amanda Chavez. I was hired and graduated academy December and started in January.
I'm Officer Daniel Gonzalez. I graduated the academy with Amanda Chavez. So I also started in January.
I'm Sergeant Stephen McLean. Actually started here as a police explorer in 97. And I'm approaching my 18 years of sworn service.
I'm Officer Stephen Delafonte. I've been with the department for two months now.
Officer Kenny Benitez, I've been with the department eight years and have seven years prior service with Monmouth LPD. So 15 years total.
Detective Doug Weishedel, been here for 18 years.
Thank you, guys. What I love about our, our group of young men and young women is that we didn't take a step back on the qualifications when we hired them. We stuck to a level that we thought would benefit the city. And we think we got some really quality officers on board here. So I just want to say thank you to you guys and this is our team, at least part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And thank, thank you all for all of your hard work. We appreciate it. Keep it up. The next part of our agenda is a proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. And I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Roxanne Lermma to the front, please. Public works superheroes help keep communities strong by providing an infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management and first response, solid waste and right-of-way management. They are what make our communities great places to live and work. The theme for 2022 National Public Works Week is ready and resilient. Join us in celebrating these superheroes. Roxanne?
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, what I would like to do is just invite our team members who are with us this evening up. So gentlemen, ladies, please come on up. We dressed up for you, for council. I want to take a moment just to address the staff. Something that I've shared with the majority of you, I don't know that all of you heard this, and I want to say this publicly because I mean this from the bottom of my heart. You are the backbone of the city. The work that you do every day allows the community members, the residents of West Covina, to live their lives, to play, to recreate, and to be safe. And that's all because of the hard work and dedication that you have provided for this community. Again, I think that these gentlemen and ladies deserve another round of applause. And following suit with what the police department did, I would like for you to introduce yourselves and want the public to be able to put a face to the name, to the people who are out there every day doing the work to allow us to live our lives.
Hi, my name is Jose Perez. I've been with the city now for about eight months.
My name is George Carlos and I've been with the city for eight months.
My name is Brian Lewis. I don't want to say how long I've been here, but 25 years.
My name is Ricardo Yoa. I've been with the city for 26 years.
My name is Jeffrey Arceo. I've been with the city for five years.
Raul Alvarado, I've been with the city for six months.
Deborah Johnston, I've been with the city for 22 years.
My name is Emanuel Villanueva. I've been with the city for three months.
My name's Rick Shield. I've been with the city 21 and a half years.
My name is Martin. I've been for the city for three months.
My name is Angel Adovandades. I've been with the city for six months.
Juan Romo, been with the city for six months.
My name's Gil Renino. I've been with the city for six months.
My name is Jose Medina. And I've been for the city about eight months. I have about four and a half years of public service.
My name is Chris. I've been with the city for about six months.
My name is Nick Prestiato and I've been with the city for 12 years.
My name is Fabian Gomez and I've been in the city for eight months.
My name is Alvaro Conchas and I've been in the city with six months.
I am Brian Dale Bedolph. I've been with the city since 2007.
Good evening, Mike Cressup. I've been with the city for 21 years.
So again, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. And just to say it again, how proud I am of each and every one of you, of what you do for the community every day. And it doesn't go unnoticed, although perhaps sometimes it feels, it might feel that way. I want you to know that the community does recognize the good work that you're doing. And we hope to continue to be able to showcase that. So thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. Now I'm going to hand the mic off to Julissa.
Good evening. On behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, we just want to thank you for your service. And the certificate reads, "I commend you for your dedicated service to the residents of West Covina. Thank you for maintaining our infrastructure, contributing to the beautification of public spaces, and playing a pivotal role in ensuring the well-being of our community. I myself am a resident of West Covina. So on behalf of me, I would also like to thank you for the service you provide for my family and for the residents of West Covina. So thank you."
Thank you, Julissa. And so we'll present both of these. Proclamation from the city of West Covina as well. And you guys could, here you go, Raul. You guys could hold on to that. And let's bring it in for a picture. Let's maybe do half and half. Yeah, let's get half of you guys over on this side, please. And Helen Tran, please. Thank you, ladies, for coming up here. The month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. The majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and the Pacific Islanders in the United States. A rather broad term, Asian Pacific encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands. I'll let Joanne and Helen say a few words before I present the certificate.
Thank you. This is an honor. Asian American Pacific Islanders make up approximately 30% of West Covina's population. As part of the Asian American Pacific Islander community, this proclamation means so much to me. It shows, it shows that we are being recognized as a valuable contributing member to society. And it also shows that it is okay for us to embrace our culture and, and accept our differences. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be able to accept the proclamation to recognize AAPI Heritage Month and an honor to be part of this organization that recognizes AAPI Heritage Month and be part of a diverse community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for both your comments. And from the city of West Covina, the proclamation. Now let's take a photo, please. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
I have four speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have five, Mayor.
Five, cool.
Our first speaker is Herman, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Albert Ochoa.
It's been a long time coming back because I know the mayor missed me. It's been a long time coming back because I know the mayor missed me. But it's unfortunate that I have to read into the record an account regarding discrimination on housing for veterans and the new population of homeless people due to inflation. My report number for the record is 112861-XML, U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights, Washington, D.C., 20530. Thank you for contacting the Department of Justice, November 2, 2021, to inform us about the review of this future intake on behalf of those who are homeless, HHH. So you see, ladies and gentlemen, here's one part of that record. And then let me talk about your First Amendment, because some of you don't know how to speak up. Well, the second claim for relief, if the city continues to censor, monitor, and deduct our time of five minutes like the past, we're going to look into some relief with this because it seems America, America is doomed. You no longer have a say, you no longer have a right to speak or be heard because some of you act like third-class citizens in West Covina. I, in particular, am one badass wetback. So violations of the First, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendment and Article Section 2 of the California Constitution, sir, regarding enforcement of unconstitutional rules of decorum. Get it? Then, I want to bring into the record my Gavin Newsom example of a complaint, legal notice and warning, violation, warning, denial of rights under the color of law, 42 U.S.C., 1983, also 18 U.S.C., Section 242, and Section 245, because I'm an American and not a douchebag. Three. Then, I'm going to read into the record, the City of Downey has violated my civil rights under the Brown Act. And submitting this into the record so that you dumbasses, or I should say idiots, will understand that you don't take advantage of what the FBI has been doing, investigating criminals. And we've been having a criminal enterprise in small cities who have been basically, like your agenda points out, violation of stealing public funds, public monies. That's why some of these guys that you heard today are not receiving the credit that they deserve, what should have been a check. These guys started three months ago. I could have been working here for you guys and cleaning up the shit in our community, starting with homelessness, Mr. Wu. I could have put those people in housing, Mr. Wu. I would have done more, Mr. Wu. No boo-shitting. I'm not an idiot, but I believe, on the record, some of you can be. So, as you see, again, this is what the record reads. I was observed that the mayor provided two warnings during public comment on an agenda-consent calendar and non-agenda items. Well, what does that mean? If I can't speak on non-agenda, if I cannot say what I believe in my heart and my passion for the First Amendment, then I am nobody. I am like your Senator, Ms. Rubio, grandstanding here tonight with her certificates. For the record, fuck her. And, again, this is about Gavin Newsom. Inflation? Don't send us our checks. We can't get paid for our gas cards. We can't receive benefits and social wellness because Gavin Newsom has held us hostage with COVID. You see me dead? I've been coming here for months without a mask. I've been getting on the train, the plane, the boats, and still haven't died from the shit you all fear because you wear a mask. Stop wearing a mask. Live or die, this is the United States of America. Oh, mommy, beware, MF. Have a stone-cold ass stare about my free speech. Thank you.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Albert Ochoa, followed by John Schumaker.
There you go, ma'am. Careful, the FBI want to see those later.
Mike Greenspan had always a ruined butt-kicking Florida gator. Of course, we can always solve that by them, the chickens, bawk, 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 coming down to the swamp to get their butts kicked. Now, I've been told, at least told me a while back, that West Covina has nothing to do with L.A. Well, I found something interesting. Under Mitchell Englander for Supervisor, 2016, on June 3, 2015, Lewis Associates LLC out of West Covina, ZIP code 91791-1543, gave $500 to his campaign. Now, Mitch Englander was not even running in this area. Case anybody doesn't know, this is that cunt, Hilda Solis' area. So, the other thing, Cho Cole Joe is no longer in the race. I know I've mentioned him before. Him and his 1% went bye-bye. I have an apology to give to someone who is not in this room. He may not even still be alive. I was a teenager in his class when he made a statement that I thought was prejudiced and bigoted. After all, he was a voter of George Wallace for president. As time has moved on, he turned out to be right. Egg on my face for not believing the Klan or Baptist minister from the fucking Baptist and the Klan. You anti-Christ Catholics have false doctrines. Quote, Protestant virus, unquote, said a previous pope. Quote, Jew deal, unquote, said Father Coughlin, the radio priest. No, folks, we got the anti-Christ Catholic deal. Quote, I'll never confess my sins to a mortal man. It's none of his damn business, unquote, said my brother's friend Danny, as he cut Catholic mass. I did the Lord's work as I opened the door for Danny cutting Catholic mass. I won't ever pray to the Virgin Mary. However, I will compare her to feminist Anne Horsting and the couple of Jewish gals. That will be for another time. Going to hell for eating meat on Friday? My, what false doctrines y'all have. What about all those priests putting their meat in your children in the name of the Lord? Are they going to heaven? Please pass the LSD so I can see what you're seeing. A Jew should not have to appease a false Catholic doctrine in a public school cafeteria with a taxpayer-subsidized lunch. I wanted my public school to serve meat, not false doctrine fish. Now Jewish delicatessen serve clam chowder on Friday as soup of the day. This food is against biblical food law of Leviticus 11. It is from God's garbage bin. If you're going to serve clam chowder in a Jewish deli, serve it with a side of queer rabbi kum. It has become so bad that when Jewish people try to get me to eat fish, I blurt out, quote, "I don't eat anti-Christ Catholic food," unquote. Well, I don't eat anti-Christ Catholic food. Harry Neers, a good old goy from Burbank, said, quote, "Go back to Florida, you Jew," unquote. You anti-Christ Catholics should go back to Rome and take that stinky yowler fish with you. If pussies smell like that, I would go queer. Now, somebody made a remark back in '91 around Memorial Day weekend, a former U.S. Senator and later Governor of Florida, now deceased, Lawton Childs, and he made a remark to a staffer, "Another special favor for the fish eaters." Now, those aren't my words, those are Lawton Childs' words. And guess what? He's of that same political party as a former member of the House of Representatives and your current supervisor, Hilda Solis. He's a dummy-crat. Just I'd like to let you know, so before everybody points their finger at the Republicans or Trump or whoever they want to point them to as a matter of convenience, I just want to be Nixonian and make things perfectly clear. This Jew will not go back to Florida. And I'm letting everybody in this room know, and everybody on the left coast, and everybody on the planet, I'm not going back to Florida, and I'm just wanting all you anti-Christ Catholics to know that. Now, as far as other things, well, it's great to see the election coming. It's great to see Cho Cole Joe, "I can't breathe," that racist white Republican pig. Now, he is a racist white pig. And one day, I'll even tell you about somebody who gave to that disgraced police officer, Mitchell Englander. Oh, last I heard, he was in a halfway house in Long Beach after he spent four months in some country club prison in Arizona, kind of the Eglin Airport's base of Arizona. I hope he took his golf clubs in his tennis racket. He should have been in Eleven Worth or something. Thank you.
Albert Ochoa, followed by John Schumaker, followed by Bill Elliott.
Mayor, City Council members, City Manager, staff, Albert Ochoa, West Covina resident. I submitted some papers I'd like to go over with you. There's one of the map I want to start off with. I want to discuss that 35 mile-per-hour speed limit sign posted. It's at the intersection of Lark Allen Avenue, traveling eastbound on East Garvey. It's posted on the turn, 35 miles per hour. Want to see if we could reduce that or lower that. So that's the first one that I want to talk to you guys coming in. It's posted at 35 miles an hour. So, as you're driving in further, we don't have a speed limit sign posted on East Garvey Avenue. We need to lower the speed limit to at least 25 miles as possible to post that at proper distance before the first vehicle gets to the first property at 1526 East Garvey Avenue. And the reason is that because within a few seconds, you're going to, it's posted at 15 miles to turn right at the corner turn. So again, you're starting off 35 coming in from Lark Allen, and then there's no speed limit on there, so they're still doing 35. Well, once you get to the corner turn, it's 15 miles per hour. They're taking it too fast, and the reason I'm saying that, we just had another near-miss incident over the weekend. This weekend on Saturday at 11:50 p.m., May 14, 2022, a vehicle traveling on East Garvey Avenue eastbound was speeding on the corner turn, lost control, and he stopped at my residence. This is less than two months ago of our last accident we had on March 26, '22. So, there's a picture of the speed limit sign that I would like to address if we can lower it on Lark Allen. If you're driving in, you'll see the 15 mile-per-hour speed limit at the corner turn. So if you're doing 35, most of them are doing 40, 45, who knows how fast because they're taking the turn too fast. You see the last picture I submitted? That's a car on my driveway. Another vehicle just ended up on my driveway. So, trying to prevent this, again, I'm not sure how to do it, but I'm just coming out with my suggestions, some kind of solutions we could go forward. We did meet at the Traffic Commission. They have a lot of good ideas and things they want to propose and come back, but this is one that, because we just had that incident over the weekend. It's getting dangerous out there, so we just want to make sure that whatever we can do, if we can lower the speed limit to educate the drivers before they do that right-corner turn. So if you look at the last picture, it shows the vehicle traveling northbound on Cherrywood Street on the incoming traffic lane. So I'm not sure what's wrong with this guy. He must be intoxicated. But this vehicle right here, if you look at the last one, he's on the lane coming towards you, incoming traffic. So I'm not sure what happened there, but this is what's going on out there at night, and I just wanted to address it with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Schumaker, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Bill Robinson.
I have just a couple questions. One is regarding BKK. I understand from watching the video that we have a buyer and a hotel is going in. So I was wondering if anybody has any information on that? This was a quote back in February from Tony Wu. So I was just wondering what, you know, what's going on, because in February, he said, "We have a buyer, and a five-star hotel's going in." I haven't seen anything. I'm just wondering if that was hope, pray, you know, or just playing, I don't know, fine? Also, regarding, you know, so needless to say, it's a little confusing. Also, I'm trying to figure out what happened between February and March, that we go from a city that when Tony Wu came onto the city council was kind of a little dusty old city, but now it's a bright, shiny one, that everything is great. And then in March, he's talking about how people are afraid to be at a bus stop or ride a bus in our city. So I'm a little confused, what happened in that month? That we go from, you know, everything's great to, well, we have an issue here. So, you know, it's a little confusing. Which one is it? You know, that, you know, things are going great or they're not? Also, the city keeps telling us they're open and things like that. Can you show the study or the report? I haven't been able to find it. It might very well be somewhere, because I don't see everything, about our health department. We've spent a total, we're going to spend a total of close to $700,000, but we promised the state auditor that any decisions over $75,000, there'd be a study or something to support it. Haven't seen one. I guess while we're at it, the Sportsplex, I know a lot of money's being spent on that and has been spent on it. Is there anything that says what, you know, what the analysis was for that? Because we told the state auditor that anything over $75,000, we were going to do that. So needless to say, I haven't, you know, seen that. So I'm just wondering, you know, if I missed it, you know, I'm not accusing you of not doing it, but if you could forward it to me, I'd appreciate it, so I have, you know, have the information and can talk on things appropriately or compliment what to do. So needless to say, you can see I'm a little confused when one thing said one time and one thing said another. And I know there were some things about problems on the 10 freeway, you know, the lanes being closed, and, you know, the city didn't notify, and, you know, and people rightly pointed out that, you know, that's Caltrans. But we had a member of our city council state that we control the 10, we control the 60, we control the 57, we control the 605. If you want to go to Vegas or you want to go anywhere, you've got to come through us. Well, we control it. Could you help let us know when these things are being done? You know, or was that just kind of a misstatement? So, that's all I'm, you know, here to talk about. Well, I'm going to add one little thing to it. We have a couple people who get up here and use words that I don't think are appropriate in this environment, to say the least. I don't like them doing that. Sad thing is, though, you know, and I spent four years in the Air Force, considered a Vietnam-era veteran, that it's unfortunate they have that right, you know? But there's times also that I wish people would not necessarily exercise the right as fully, take into account once in a while, you know, the people that are here and who else is listening to it. I defend their right to say what they want to say, you know, wholeheartedly. I just wish they would, you know, once in a while, step back and say, "I don't need to say that way, say it that way," you know, that type of thing. So, that takes care of me for tonight. Thank you.
Bill Elliott, followed by Bill Robinson.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bill Elliott. I'm a longtime citizen of this city and advocate for the Constitution, which I swore an oath to support and defend. Today, in America, race politics is destroying our country. It erases people, it dehumanizes them, it elevates appearance over initiative and decency and all the other God-given qualities that make every person of every color unique, yet morally equal to every person. Race politics always ends up in mutual hatred in very predictable ways. There's only one answer to easing racial tension, and that's through de-escalation and work toward the worthy goal of colorblind meritocracy, which is simply treating all people with dignity and respect as human beings. We have a moral duty to do this because all people have equal moral value, no matter what we look like or the color of our skin. All lives matter, period. That's not the determination of the U.S. government, that is the determination of of Almighty God. That most Americans would like to see the return of the American way of life, which is meritocracy. Judge me by what I do, not how I look. Judge me by the content of my character, not the color of my skin. Yet virtually every voice in power today is leading us in the opposite direction. Only our leaders stand in our way of this problem, which is growing worse by every day. We ultimately deserve the kind of leaders we elect. Lately, I hear lots of cry over the hatred that critical race theory is, and how children are being indoctrinated in our public schools. Critical race theory is racist. Make no mistake about it. There's a man in our community who is a college professor of critical race theory. He is an activist attorney who wants to be a judge, and his name is Thomas Allison. Most would agree that prior behavior is the best indicator of future behavior, and I believe that Mr. Allison should be judged by that standard. Surely, an activist attorney who teaches divisive and hateful critical race theory and then runs for judge, if elected, will go on to become an activist judge. It's common sense. We do not need another activist judge in this community. If Mr. Allison were elevated to Superior Court by the voters, he could be assigned to traffic court, civil court, family court. How can we trust someone with such hateful opinion of an entire group of people based solely on the color of their skin? How could such a judge make ethical decisions based on law when presiding over a civil court case with a white plaintiff and a black defendant? How could this, how can this be? Or regarding a bitter divorce custody battle between a white husband and a father versus a black wife and mother? Is it possible for him to base his decisions on law with CRT being so deeply ingrained in him? Or regarding a drunk driving crash resulting in death with a black defendant and a white arresting officer? Is he going to get a pass from Judge Allison? Mr. Allison favors black people over all others in all things. He would make a dubious judge at best. James Thomas endorses Thomas Allison. Remember James Thomas, that one term mayor we had that got thrown out by the voters because he thought he knew better for the voters than the voters knew themselves? Forced district elections down our throats. Remember that guy? He's gone. He's endorsing Thomas Allison. District One Councilman Brian Tabatabai, a fellow purveyor of critical race theory garbage, also endorsing Mr. Allison. He's firmly anti-police, advocating to defund them while supporting District Attorney George Gascon. But at least Brian admits it. Those thugs over at the LA Federation of Labor, as well as SEIU Local 271, excuse me, 721, also endorses candidacy. And there's at least one claim of an endorsement from a former West Covina mayor, but that person denies doing so. And I believe him. This is a credibility issue. Mr. Allison refuses to answer whether or not he supports George Gascon's recall. That tells me all I need to know about Mr. Allison. What his campaign media states, "My loyalty will be to the law and my decision," excuse me, "my devotion to achieving justice." What brand of justice is he referring to? Social justice? Critical race theory? BLM justice? Riots? Arson? No justice, no peace? Mr. Allison should never be allowed on the bench. If you like George Gascon and you like Brian Tabatabai, you are going to love Mr. Allison.
Bill Robinson.
Good evening. I last spoke on the WHO, I'll call them the World Homicide Organization. On March 11, 2022, a press conference under the banner of Restore Scientific Integrity by Global COVID Summit convened in Rome, which produced petitions signed by 17,000 medical doctors. The findings and conclusions of a dozen top-tier American physicians I'll list right now. The mission of the group is to end the orchestrated crisis and to formally declare that the actions of this corrupt alliance constitute nothing less than crimes against humanity. We declare and the data confirm that the COVID-19 experimental gene therapy injections must end. We believe and we've observed that these products do not prevent infection, replication, and transmission of Omicron. The vast majority of COVID infections that occurred are in those who have been vaccinated. We declare that doctors should not be blocked from providing lifesaving treatment. Had early treatment not been blocked, millions would be alive today. This is an established fact, and no question about this. Whether FDA agrees with or not is irrelevant. They can lie about the science, or they can agree with the science. It doesn't matter. The science is the science. Never have we seen a policy to say, "Let's hedge on the side of doing nothing compared to doing something with safe and effective drugs." We declare that the state of national emergency that facilitates corruption and facilitates the pandemic should end. The emergency phase of the pandemic is over, and only doctors can declare that. Medical privacy should never again be violated. All travel and social restrictions must cease. All personal data must be expunged from non-HIPAA compliant databases. We declare that masks are not and never have been effective protection against an airborne respiratory virus in a community setting. The CDC nor OSHA recognizes these facial coverings as PPE. We declare that funding and research must be established for vaccination damage, death, and suffering. Public health officials have ignored early warnings of negative efficacy and were evident even over a year ago. We declare no opportunity should be denied in our society, including education, military service, or medical careers, including treatment over unwillingness to take a vax. Vax status has been a new form of discrimination, and it needs to stop. We declare that the First Amendment violations and medical censorship by government, technology, and media companies should cease, and the bill will rights restored. I hope that we will reach these ethical standards in allowing healthcare providers access various platforms to speak and to share their knowledge and research openly without censorship. We declare that Pfizer, Moderna, BioNTech, Janssen, AstraZeneca, and their enablers willfully withheld and omitted safety and effectiveness information from their patients and physicians and should be immediately indicted for fraud. We declare government and medical agencies must be held accountable. Each of these agencies and these companies should be independently scrutinized and held accountable for the damage they have caused to humanity. We ask that you help us demand change, demand accountability, demand integrity, respect, and try to rebuild our community. The past two years have produced a fear-based economic system. The new economics is going to be digitally based, you know, it's the Chinese method, you know. We should bring back the human rights and the rule of law. The better path forward is for the nation to exit the WHO, defund that organization, investigate and prosecute the World Homicide Organization, many folks believe. The global predators have had an agenda that is dark, colonial, futile, subhuman, and irredeemable. Thanks.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. And City Manager, would you please respond to--
Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor to respond?
To, oh, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the floor. At our last council meeting, there were things said about the community of West Covina that echo more loudly today after the tragedy in Buffalo. For those unaware, this past Saturday, white supremacists drove for hours into a black community and murdered 10 people. Murdered them because of the fear that blacks were the replacers of white Americans. The idea that white Americans were disappearing, an idea that found its way into our chambers on May 3. When we look at these events, we ask ourselves, "What could we have done? What could we, as a society, have done to prevent such a tragedy?" As Holocaust survivor Eli Vazal famously said, "Let us remember, what hurts the victim most is not the cruelty of the oppressor, but the silence of the bystander. And it's in our silence that I find inexplicable." These last two weeks, I have had several residents share their concerns about those comments. One resident wrote, "When Elliott talks about making West Covina more homogeneous, inviting more white people, does he think we do not count? Did we not contribute? Are we inferior?" That made me sad because West Covina's beauty is more than the parks, streets, it's her mix of people. As an elected leader, as someone given a platform by the community, I want to make clear that the ideology that led to the white supremacist violence at the Tops grocery in Buffalo, the Walmart in El Paso, the synagogue in Pittsburgh, and countless others do not have a place in West Covina. Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
No, just wanted to add on. The massacre, the hate, is not only the black and white. It's have an Asian to each other. Don't forget the church, okay? We have a Chinese citizen, okay, and doesn't like the Taiwanese. And they went inside, locked the place, and tried to kill almost everybody inside. So violence is all the places, including among the race itself. For example, Asian, prime to Asian, okay, hate between Chinese and Taiwanese. So this is all should be brought up. So if you talk about black and white, I hope you talk about some auto massacre too. And I think, okay, we have Dr. Chen, okay, sacrificed his life to stop the massacre for let disgruntled person, he want to kill everybody, okay, they want to Taiwanese independent, okay? That's just ideology. It shouldn't grow up the hate. So I understand some of the speech, okay, freedom of speech, people can speak. But we want to love to each other, no matter what kind of race you are, we love each other, no matter hate speech, this and that. But we hope you understand, with love, we can unite it, okay? And love, we can work together. And West Covina is very diverse, and we want to bring people together. Thank you.
You, Councilman Wu. Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the floor. The response to the comments on May 3 in this chamber, and my comments tonight, were representative of the community of West Covina. The comments I read tonight, the community had asked for, and as an elected leader here, I've shared them. These comments are not about white, black, it's about this idea of replacement that was spoken about here in the chamber on May 3, and has been spoken about before. These comments were made by a figure in the community who has some influence and access to power in West Covina. And my comments were to acknowledge all residents of West Covina, to make sure they all know that they're valued, that the city of West Covina welcomes everyone to come and live and enjoy, and that our diversity is our strength. And the idea that were said on May the 3 in this council chamber needed to be addressed. And that's where those comments are from. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, would you please respond to public comment concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. I'd like to thank all of our speakers for coming tonight and to share their thoughts and opinions. I'll briefly try to respond as I can to some of the comments that were made. Mr. Herman, Mr. Greenspan, it really is our privilege to afford you the opportunity to seek redress of your grievances here in these chambers, and to afford you the opportunity to share your opinions. We would defend those rights. The Ochoa family, Albert, thank you for being here. I just like to, I know you know, but I would like for the public to know and to say now that this issue of these traffic problems is being taken quite seriously by the city. Exactly a week ago, on May the 10, our Traffic Commission and about 10 residents in attendance, together with the traffic engineer, the police department, discussed a number of what they're calling Phase 1 solutions that can be implemented quickly. And we intend to move rapidly. These recommendations will be in front of you, Council, on your June 7 meeting, at your next meeting, so we can get those in place as quickly as we can. Mr. Schumaker had a number of questions regarding BKK. There's been a publicly approved real estate transaction with the Sing Poli Group. I'd be happy to share those documents. Those are all of record. Regarding the health department matters, there was money budgeted using Recovery Act funds for Phase 1 work done by TransTech. We are continuing to work with the California Department of Public Health, and their high-ranking officials, they're meeting with us regularly. We're on our schedule to meet every two or three weeks, and that is moving along. Sometimes it feels like it's moving along quite slowly, but they have to promulgate regulations under which West Covina and any other jurisdiction could apply. And then they're going to issue emergency regulations that would govern health departments. There will be some studies required, I'm anticipating. I haven't seen anything in writing. They've not issued it yet. But I'm expecting they will require this city and any city that wishes to apply to stand up its own health department due to a community health needs assessment and a community health improvement program based on that study. So those are going to be some detailed reports that are on the horizon here. Questions about the jurisdiction of the 10 freeways entirely in the hands of Caltrans. We are made aware about their rehabilitation projects, their road repair projects, and we do push those out through the city's social media because the 55-hour closures for these weekend jobs do have an impact on our residents, and we will continue to do so. And Mr. Schumaker, thank you for your comments and support of civility in these chambers. I appreciate that. Mr. Robinson talked about COVID and a number of organizations that have been involved on the world stage with the global pandemic. I would just encourage everyone to seek medical advice regarding COVID and its impacts. And then finally, I would just like to say, Mr. Elliott talked about a number of candidates for office and critical race theories, et cetera. Just like to say again publicly that in these chambers, we affirm the dignity and worth of all who we serve and all who come to these chambers. I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, and Councilman Wu?
Yeah, and I just want to add on the major concern of Mr. Ochoa, okay, on that street, okay, East Garvey, okay, South, okay, that really extremely problematic, okay, because I lived that neighborhood since 1989 to 2003, before I moved a little bit, okay, east, okay, and but still, I, okay, was driving, okay, I'm driving all the time to that street. Why? Because on my street called Test, I will go to your street and make a left turn, go to Glendora Avenue to have a lunch, or go to the movie theaters. So that become, it's a route for a lot of people driving. So the problem basically is when you're coming back. For people coming back, go through the east, okay, go to the Lark Allen, and the people intend to speed because they have a turn, and they're straight. So I watched the traffic, okay, committee talking about, they have a lot of good suggestion, okay, to quickly to implement so we don't have a tragic happen, okay, to the neighborhood because people walking on that street and people, kid riding the bike, okay. I know my kid was riding the bike, grew up in that neighborhood, so I know it's very active for people, really exercise and this and that. And then-- And that street coming up is kind of blind. So I think beside we put the orange-yellow, the channel divide, and go through that yellow line. So that thing will kind of stop the car and channel then into a right, sharp right turn. But I think in the middle, they didn't mention, but my suggestion, since I'm driving there all the time, is when you through that curve, you don't see that straight, and you don't know the end is going to have a sharp right turn. So in the middle, I think we should put a sign and say slow, and then down below, you have a graphic say sharp right turn approach. So like a graphic, so people will know, okay, that you're going to make a sharp right turn quickly, so we're going to slow, not only to lower the speed, but put a sign when you make a turn, okay, when you turn and go straight, before that, then we make a warning sign. So I think it won't, if people DUI, nothing, you can stop then. But if people from all the neighborhood, they don't know, they're going to hit a sharp right turn, they will go to your driveway all the time. So hopefully, with that warning and with that, okay, channel device, I think we can cut down major, okay, potential accident for the neighborhood. So this is my suggestion, okay? I think that can quickly, in the next meeting, can bring up. So hopefully, okay, we can have a peace of mind for the neighborhood in the area. So I think that possible can solve the major issue. Hopefully, that will right away implement for you guys. Okay, this is my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. And city manager, what you were, now for your report.
If I may, just have a couple items I wanted to report out tonight. We earlier thanked our crew, and Brian, thank you and everyone for being here tonight. I really believe that Public Works makes modern civilization possible. People don't appreciate the extent to which all of the things our people do every single day makes living in a dense community and in a modern community possible. So thank you, and thank everyone for being here tonight. I wanted to mention Police Week and Police Memorial Week. I know it's easy to perhaps to say that we will never forget, but I think we do. So I'd like to say out loud the names of the people who are memorialized on the plaque right outside our police station front, Frederick Hamm, Jay Jackson, Kenneth Reed, because they gave their lives and service to the community, and this is the week that we honor that and thank them and their families for those services. Couple things on the horizon. We've got a Memorial Day celebration coming up, May the 30th, here at the Civic Center campus, 10 a.m. I hope people know that they're welcome, and if they are able to attend, do so. We've got a paper shredding event coming up on Saturday, June the 18th, 9 a.m. at the Senior Center, 2501 East Cortez, 9 a.m. to 1. I've had some inquiries from public and from individual council members about what's going on with the new outdoor water restrictions. And I'm arranging a presentation for an upcoming city council meeting. They haven't confirmed that date, but we've made the request a couple of times, and they've said that they will honor it and will have somebody here to explain publicly. Wanted to mention again our upcoming 4th of July Heroes Parade. We're inviting our veterans, our military personnel, our first responders, and those engaged in essential service to participate. It'll be 10 a.m. at the intersection of Glendora and Walnut Creek Parkway proceeding north toward the freeway. And if people want to get involved, they're welcome to contact our public services staff. Really proud of the fact that we're paving so many streets. We talk about our pavement management program, we talk about the numerical scores that streets get by which they get ranked and get paved. We're paving more than 100 streets right now. And it's one of my favorite activities as your city manager, so I had every chance. We're out there talking to residents, and the results are really good. We've got a good contractor in our Jane Noble, I think they're giving us a high-quality job. Our inspector is speaking very well of the level of service and the compaction and the grade of the paving job, so I'm pleased with it. Wanted to mention our summer concert series. We've published the dates, June 22nd, June 29th, July 13th, July 20th, and July 27th. There's a mixture of different kinds of music from R&B variety to country to classic rock, et cetera. And we hope people come to all of those and enjoy all different types of music. We're going to do those on Wednesday nights this summer. Lastly, I just wanted to mention the county fair is up and running. I got to go, I really hope, I was heartened to see that they've brought back a number of the industrial and agricultural exhibits. This valley has strong ag roots. And I'd like for West Covina in future years, together with the other cities, to have a day at the fair. We're going to work to see to it that we can push for that for the coming years. That's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I still think it's, West Covina Spring Festival is better.
You're probably right.
Yeah, next year, I know Razan will do even better and greater for people to enjoy in West Covina Spring Festival for all the group coming together. We're all different ethnic group, love each other, brotherhood and sisterhood. Okay, and that's why we bring community together. So, okay, I know everybody says it's a great event or Spring Festival. So we will bid county fair.
Thank you. That takes us to our consent calendar. And we've got nine items on the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull anything from consent? Councilman Tabatabai?
Number eight.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve items 1 through 7 and 9?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and a second, 1 through 7 plus 9.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wu, a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, yes. Excuse me, I have a couple ordinance titles to read into the record before I take roll call. Ordinance number 2497, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, adopting a military equipment policy governing the use of military equipment, pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Thank you. Councilman Wu? Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, so for number eight, let's move to number eight. And Councilman Tabatabai, what, did you have a specific question, or what did you want to discuss?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had, there were a couple of topics that came out during the workshops, and so I thought this would be the opportunity to ask some questions regarding that. Specifically, to the 12 public work hires, the sportsplex, and then the health department.
I'm sorry, was there a specific question with the 12? With the 12 proposed maintenance workers, they are to be funded from gas tax and sewer fund, so no general fund spending with those?
So, yeah, so I guess my question on the the gas tax money, just for the public to hear. The gas tax money usually is used to fund what type of projects?
So it's been funding maintenance and infrastructure projects as well as operations. And so over the years, it has not been fully utilized. And so this year, we're proposing to fully utilize all of those funds. So there will still be some funds going to CIP in addition to the funds going to salaries and benefits.
Okay, thank you. And so I think that kind of leads into the sportsplex question. So in the budget we were presented with, we're spending, looks like $330,000 on salaries and benefits at the sportsplex. And then projected, proposed $306,000 in 2022, 2023. And so I guess my question there is, now that we're running the sportsplex, how many of our Public Works employees are working there on a on a regular basis? Because I understand we're hiring these 12 more. And so I guess my question is, are we using gas tax money to hire 12 more because we have utilized some of the resource at the sportsplex? And therefore, some of the normal operations aren't getting done?
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Roxanne.
To answer your question, Councilmember Tabatabai, as you are aware, there are a number of projects and opportunities that are in the city that really consist of deferred maintenance. Opportunities to fix pots holes in the street, to really address our sewers. And all of those things have not been addressed for a number of years. So we're not just looking at, you know, the past six months, the past year, the past two years. We're looking at years, perhaps even decades, of just not having the opportunity to get our hands in there and really resolve some of those issues for our community members. So what the Finance Director Sikema has done, is she's taken a look at the numbers, taken a look at the funding, the funding that is available, and really decided to, really looked at maximizing those funds, those dollars that we wouldn't necessarily be able to use for other types of projects so that we can invest back into those necessary projects that keep the streets in good repair, that keep the sewers working, and also funding the CIPs. So that is what it is. It's not that we're shifting resources back to the sportsplex or moving things around. You know, the city does own the sportsplex. So we do still have a responsibility to maintain it. And really, the city was given the opportunity to maintain it at the beginning of last year because of the transition of authority.
Yeah, no, and I understand what you're saying. I think that the city does need to consider what our capacity is to continue to run the sportsplex. So that goes to the sportsplex itself. So from what was presented this past year, we subsidized the sportsplex to roughly $350,000. And the current budget shows we're going to be subsidizing it again, another $180,000. And so I think my, you know, my question as we're moving forward, and as we as the council have to consider, you know, the capacity for the city to run the sportsplex and to it not be something the city has to subsidize, I guess. Do we project when we can get to a point that we won't be subsidizing?
I think with any enterprise fund, through the chair if I may, I think with any, I apologize. I think with any enterprise fund, anything that we're looking at sustaining ourselves, it does require an investment. And just as you had indicated, council member, that it's ultimately up to the city council, what level of investment, what level of subsidy that the council feels is responsible for making. So at some point, when those decisions are made, staff has a responsibility to carry our end of the bargain, if you will. You know, we'll be charged with having to get those, get the revenues at a level that we can support. Again, with the council dictating what level of subsidy that we're going to have for that area. And then, of course, if it comes to a point that, you know, the council feels, okay, you know, perhaps we need to shift things or take a look at a different direction, the council always has the ability to do that. And I think really, how we get to the root of that is continuing this conversation. So by having, you know, transparent budget processes, by updating the council on a continuous basis, we can really get to the heart of that. So I hope that answers the question. I can't give you a direct by this month, by this day, by this year.
No, it was a great answer, thank you. Last, on the health department. So the last real presentation we had in the public on the health department, it was said that the health department was not going to cost any money. We then voted and approved $100,000 for TransTech. And so now we've moved another half million dollars for these proposed community health needs assessments. And so in this budget, though, it's being presented that there will be no cost to the health department. And I'm just wondering, what analysis are we using to support that?
So the numbers for the proposed budget were provided by the consultant working with the city on the health department. And so they are estimating that once it gets up and going, that it will be self-supporting. So right now, it is not proposed that it will receive a subsidy from the general fund to operate.
Okay, so from my understanding, the model that is being proposed is similar to what the city of Vernon does in terms of environmental health and being able to generate enough revenue from licenses and things like that, and inspections. But the city of Vernon, they have had to pass several taxes to support their health department. So did TransTech provide what they were looking at, what data was supporting this idea that it was going to be as neutral?
I do not have backup documentation from TransTech. I don't know if there were further conversations with staff, other staff members on it. I was just given the final numbers.
Okay, so staff hasn't seen what
That's just with finance.
Or what data evidence was used to support the idea that it would be a zero cost?
I was not in the conversations, but I know they meet on a regular basis. So I would assume that there were, that some of that information was shared.
Okay.
I would need to get with TransTech and look into that and could get back with.
Yeah, that would be wonderful if you could do that. It's just because I'm a little concerned, because one of the things that came up at the workshop that I might have missed was we did, you know, with our code enforcement hires, that was supposed to be another cost-neutral because of the revenue they would have generated from fines. And I believe at the last workshop, you said that the, there hasn't been sufficient enough revenues to pay for those hires. Did I understand that correctly?
So even at the time that they were approved by council, it wasn't proposed that they would be fully self-sustaining. They would be subsidized by the general fund. But they also haven't fully hired all of those employees yet either. So we're not even able to receive the incoming benefit because we haven't hired those to go out and get the citations.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And to piggyback and add to that, Stephanie, I'd like us to have a look at if it's more beneficial to have part-time code enforcement or full-time, just based on all costs involved, like turnover, cost to hire, et cetera. So if we could keep an eye on that and report back to us when you have a chance, please.
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
I want to follow up with my fellow councilmen regarding the code enforcement. But code enforcement, okay, not only to fine people, receive the fine to balance, but they will encourage people to fire permit. And that permit fee is going to the building and safety budget, it's not going to code enforcement. My understanding, I discussed with Mayor many times, okay, I say, and how is the budget, how is the number coming up? But indirectly, due to the code enforcement with illegal addition, with all these things, okay, they encourage so many, many of application that come into the city, and they have to pay the permit. Because, for example, I have a resident, okay, in my neighborhood, okay, and the county me say, they have been fined, okay, and from the code enforcement, because the neighbor, okay, and report to the city, he has some kind of illegal addition. And I say, then you have to work with the code enforcement to have a permit. And then he has to go into legal and hire the right person. And then to make sure it's a proper, okay, build, safety is number one. At the same time, they have to go to the city, pay the permit fee, et cetera, et cetera. But those number won't go to the code enforcement budget or income, they will go to the building. So my, I understand we increasing, just based on last year's report, we increased so many of building and safety permit. I think we increasing like double, because code enforcement- double, because code enforcement have had then to make sure they will apply and to get a permit, including we have a couple of big business coming in at the south side, okay, the SF supermarket. So, they didn't apply the permit, the code enforcement went there and to make sure they have to go to city, get a proper permit. So, anyway, I think something that is very positive for us to have a code enforcement to clean up the city, at the same time to make sure the safety, building safety, okay, they act as our city extension to make sure, okay, we are, the city, the building code is protected. And another thing, I agree with Mayor talking about the full-time or part-time, because I think Mylan, my understanding, the part-time, it got a lot of problem to keep the staff. So, we might have to look into how can we get maybe couple of full-time, and then maybe will benefit to the city rather than part-time. If they come and go and they train them and they disappear, it's really become a major issue, right? It become expensive, become very expensive. So, I think maybe we need to look into, maybe we don't need to have a 10 part-time, maybe we shrink into maybe five full-time and do a budget analysis, see whether it be benefit to the city and they will be loyal to us. If you treat people with part-time, they're not going loyal to us. We need to take care of our staff to make sure they're proud to work for us. So, this is follow what you say. I think there's a good point from both of you, see how can we help out with our staffing and then look into our budget, okay. But, I think with code enforcement, really, right now, it's really cleaning up the city a big time. A lot of people, poverty obsolete, they clean it up right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And let's see here. And now, did you have any other questions? Or that's it? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve?
It's just receiving file.
It's receiving file. We need a motion to receiving file?
No, if there's no objection, it will.
Thank you. Then we'll receive in file number eight. That takes us to public hearings. Item number 10. Item number 10 is a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, general plan amendment number 21-01, zone change number 21-02, precise plan number 21-02, tree removal permit number 20-01, tentative tract map number 83576 at 1912 West Merced Avenue. This matter is set for public hearing, consists of consideration to approve general plan amendment with everything I just read. This is to construct 39 residences known as the Grove at Merced, internal drive aisles, common open space, guest parking spaces, and other associated incidental improvements on a 2.26 acre site. Will the city clerk verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice was given there.
Thank you. This time, I will open the public hearing. Wait, we're going to have, first, we're going to hear from the applicants. Then, those in favor of the project can speak, and then those opposed can speak. And last, applicants will be allowed to rebut any testimony in opposition to the project. Mr. Carmody, who will present the report?
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to ask our Assistant City Manager for Development Services, Paulina Morales, to give a brief staff report, and that'll then be part of the public hearing record when you invite the interested parties to speak.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. The item before you, as the mayor mentioned, is the Grove at Merced. It's a 2.26 acre vacant lot located on the southwest corner of Merced and Van Horn Avenue. The site was previously occupied by a school use that was demolished in 2018. The property owner had come in and gotten permits approved by the Planning Commission in 2020 for assisted living project, however, has now since decided to move forward with a residential project. The project includes a precise plan, tentative tract map, zone change, general plan amendment, tree removal permit, and a mitigated deck. The tree removal is an amendment as it was previously approved with the assisted living project. So, as mentioned, the site is, it will include 39 units, townhomes with two-car garage. It'll include eight additional guest parking spaces on site, and then 9,471 square feet of common open space, and with landscape buffers along Van Horn and Merced. It'll include 33 canopy shade trees along Van Horn and the common open spaces, four palm trees, 15 small trees, 32 vertical trees. And there's a condition of approval that will require 19 trees, be 36 inches box-sized trees. 38 significant trees will be removed as part of the tree application. So, these are the views of the property from Merced. And these are the views from Van Horn Avenue. So, the specific plan standards for the project, first is the proposed project. It's going to be 20, or 17.26 dwelling units per acre below the specific plan standards of 20. The building height will be up to two stories, or so it'll be 28 feet. The setbacks are going to be 15 from the street and 10 from the interior of the side. The parking will be two-car garages per unit with eight uncovered guest parking spaces. That'll be nine, as mentioned, 9,471 square feet of common open space and 11,391 square feet of private open space, 108 square feet per unit, a minimum. So, these are the facade, or the, of the proposed buildings. This is Merced, and on top is the frontage from Merced, and the bottom is from Van Horn. The architecture style is Spanish with stucco earth toned colored walls, tile, S tile roof, and window shutters. The condition of approval includes revising the fence along Merced to be similar to Van Horn, which will be two-feet wall with three-foot tubular metal fence on top. These are the two different color schemes for the project. So, there are three different floor plans. The difference is the garage on floor plan three is larger. All floor plans include the two-car garage on the first floor, the kitchen, the bathroom, living room, and dining room. The plan three is the exception, it's a four-bedroom unit with, so that's the larger plan, plan three. So, the plan one is 1,325 square feet, plan two is 1,375, and the plan three is 1,475 square feet. So, the additional requirements of the project includes yard in public places, the development impact fees we anticipate receiving is over $50,000. There is a park dedication fee with this project, and we will, are requiring a home ownership assistance program, providing $50,000 for at least five homes to go to first-time home buyers. The applicant did provide a community meeting and did reach out to the neighbors. And as mentioned earlier, the legal notices went out. The environmental review, it was a mitigated neck deck. It was less than significant impact with mitigation for biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, and tribal cultural resources. The LACSD provided information on sewer capacity in San Jose Creek Water Reclamation Plant, estimated project wastewater flow and sewer connection fee. The info provided by LACSD does not raise any new significant environmental issues and does not change the impact conclusions of the initial study. So, this evening, staff is recommending that you approve the resolutions pertaining to the project. Staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of staff by City Council?
I have a question. Or, did they want to speak first? Or, okay, go ahead and...
Well, first, before they speak, first, no questions of council?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, of staff.
Question, with that meeting that they had, how many residents attended, those neighboring residents?
Well, I think that might be better for the presenter.
Yeah, the applicant would be able to answer that.
Okay, so, no questions for staff?
Oh, not for staff, no.
Okay, then, would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I'm Matt Livingston. I'm the president of RC Homes. With me is my colleague, Tim Sales, who's the vice president and has been in, leading the design efforts on this project, and is here to answer specific design questions as well. I just wanted to start, tell you briefly about us and our history with the properties. We've been working on this for quite a long time. RC Homes is a Los Angeles-based home builder. We've got, have projects throughout Southern California. We build about 50 homes per year. Being relatively small home builder really allows us to provide excellent customer service and stay with our homebuyers for their life and their, and their homes that they buy from us. One of our missions and our core principles is to provide homes that not only meet today's needs, but also are forward-looking homes. And, you know, we believe that, and we know that our homebuyers, this is typically their largest investment in their life, and they should feel in five years and 10 years, that they're still getting that value from their home. And Tim will speak about some of the features that we incorporate in our homes to that end. I, you know, wanted to mention, we've, as was mentioned, that we initially had an assisted living facility approved on the site. Our core business is homebuilding. That was a brief detour we took, that COVID reminded us to stick to what we know, which is homebuilding. And that project got approved in May of 2020, which is not, not the best timing. The, that project was over 80,000 square feet and had 111 beds. It was a much more dense land use than what we're proposing now. The bright side of all of this is that we've worked closely with our neighbors for a very long time. We have two of our neighbors on Van Horn are here. We had, there was two other neighbors that had to leave because they had to get up at 4:00 AM tomorrow. So, it was very kind of them to show up. I won't take up too much more of your time, but we've worked very closely with our neighbors. I think this is probably the most community interaction we've had on a project. There's 10 homes on Van Horn. Four people out of those 10 showed up tonight to voice their support and have signed letters of support. We also have other letters that we've submitted to staff. It really was a collective effort. We sat in the backyards of one of our neighbors who had to leave and showed them different design ideas. I think we reached a consensus that Spanish-inspired architecture is what they wanted there. We debated three stories versus two stories. We settled on two stories, so it was consistent with the neighborhood. On one side of us, you've got much civic uses. You've got the Freemasons and Hearst Ranch, and then it transitions into much more traditional single-family. Obviously, you also have Queen of the Valley Hospital and a lot of educational facilities right there. So, really good transition from the civic uses to the single-family. One of the things that we heard first and foremost is that we want something there from our neighbors. It's been an attractive nuisance. We've really worked hard to clean up graffiti and make sure that trash is picked up if people illegally dump on the site. But, people want to see something there and to see their neighborhood complete. Other things that we did, we made sure our vehicular access is not on Van Horn. All of the access is off of Merced, as far from Van Horn as possible. So, you know, our homeowners won't be driving through Van Horn to access garages or accessing community. And we're just, we're really excited to be part of the future of West Covina. There's a lot of stuff going on in the city. There's a lot of stuff going on right in our neighborhood. And really appreciate your time tonight. And if, be so kind, Tim would like to say a couple words about the design.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. To answer the councilperson's question, we had an additional one person show up to our community outreach event. Unfortunately, not many folks showed up to that, but she was supportive, and she lived on the far side of Merced. I guess, am I limited to the 40 seconds left?
No, you could.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, yeah, there you go, 20 second only. I like that. And I'll cede the rest of my time to you, Councilmember Wu. Thanks, Matt. I'd just like to provide some additional comments.
Bad idea.
Right. I wanted to just provide some additional detailed comments, first on talking about how the project fits into important planning and economic development goals in the city. And secondly, to talk about some specific details about the project and how we really work hard to increase community benefit and environmental benefit for the project. Certainly, we're all aware of the housing crisis that we have in California, and West Covina is no different. You, I'm sure, have been presented the rather large regional housing needs assessment numbers of 5,300 new housing units for West Covina in the next eight-year cycle. Really, you know, we're a small part of that, but we're in the workforce housing component, and about over half of the units in your arena numbers are in that moderate incomes and above category. To encourage these needed, high-quality homes, your housing element supports a range of residential densities, including reasonable increases of density on infill sites like this. And we taught, when we think about density, a lot of people like to talk about a statistic, but when we're looking at it with the community and designing, we really like to look at about how it relates a proposed project to the interaction with the community setting, and how that proposed project, you know, fits in with community and neighborhood trends. And by that, what I really mean is, for example, we have worked to design the project to open up along the edges, as staff indicated. We've removed solid perimeter walls, and we present all of the front doors on, along the street edges to the, to the neighbors, to provide a neighborly and open and outward-facing type of a development. We've worked very hard with regards to density to also maintain really usable outdoor spaces, including sizable outdoor recreational spaces, combined of both large spaces for private use in a lot of the units, and then also a very large centralized space. The shared recreation space is oriented to the south of the project to increase solar exposure and also to complement the natural open space that occurs at the Walnut Creek Wash. You know, the, the open spaces will be enhanced with over 81 trees, so they'll be very nicely landscaped. Combined with the charming Spanish architecture style that the staff mentioned, and also the two-story level height limits that we're enforcing, we feel the project delivers the type of scale, look and feel, and curb appeal that complements the surroundings. You know, the location and the uses that are proposed are also an appropriate transition, as Matt said, between the existing single-family homes in the west and north side of the site to the more intense uses on south side of the wash. We believe the project fits in well and supports these economic and community development trends that are occurring in this area south of the site. For example, as you're well aware, the current phases of the Queen of the Valley Hospital Improvement Program will soon deliver over 380 new jobs into that community, and over 1,000 jobs over the total phase of all of the hospital expansion. This development will be a really great addition to the neighborhood to provide housing that's convenient to potential employees there, and opportunities for city residents to live, work, and play in their same community. Also, we feel that connecting this sort of community life, personal life, and work life is a super-important trend that's emerging. And this has come over many, many years. I used to refer to this as jobs-housing balance, and now I know the state and cities are working on things like active transportation planning to really better knit together communities to encourage residents to consider short trips completed by walking and bicycling. And in looking at your active transportation plan for the area, I was really pleased to see that the area to the southeast, specifically southeast of Merced and Orange, about a block away, is an above-average generator of these active transportation trips, and it has a large potential to grow even more, which makes sense because it combines the hospital, the parks, and the school. We believe that this project will plug into that very well, providing good-density housing that can provide more users to plug into active transportation and make worthwhile the investments that are in your plan to increase bike lanes and the sort. Generally, we certainly expect that the residents at this development will be living, working, and shopping in the city. In closing, I just want to provide some quick comments on very specific things about the project, how we believe it drives community benefit and environmental benefit. Interestingly, Matt referred to the previous project. This project is actually smaller and generates fewer trips than the prior project. This development, when compared to the previous assisted living facility, is about 20,000 square feet, smaller inhabitable square footage, and that's about 25% reduction. In addition, this new project, by comparison to the old project, is providing 30 additional parking spaces, which is a 50% increase in parking relative to that prior project, which is still on the books as approved. And then, comparing the two environmental analyses, it was interesting to note that, in fact, the new project produces fewer overall average daily trips by reducing by about 9%. 9%, with significant decreases of around 30% fewer trips in the AM and PM rush hours. So we're comparing different kinds of uses, but it is interesting to look at how this is actually a little bit less intensive of use. We've also tried hard to provide community benefits through good-quality design and planning. The project has been designed by a renowned Southern California architectural firm called Hezma Hult Architects, who have over 40 years of experience. As staff mentioned, the two-story floor plans offer really great opportunities for first-time and entry-level and first-time move-up housing opportunities. We believe predominantly for young couples and young families. This is a customer segment that we really specialize in at RC Homes. Two-thirds of the homes will have very large fenced private front yards of about 300 square feet or so that face out to the streets. In addition, all the homes will have access to about 9,500 square feet of common open space that's used for passive recreation and outdoor dining. All the homes will have a two-car garage, enclosed garage, with extra space for individual trash and recycling carts inside the home. We feel this is very important because we want to avoid messy centralized trash service. Each home will also include a photovoltaic solar system on the, on the roof that provides part of the power of the house, and each garage will be EV charger, electric vehicle ready charger, so future vehicles can be easily accommodated. The average PV energy production is such, and to support better indoor air quality, we've also made a decision here that this will be an all-electric community. So no natural gas will be used at the site, which benefits both the indoor air quality as well as furthers your city's general plant policy to reduce reliance on greenhouse gas emissions. In lieu of gas, we'll be using high-quality and high-efficiency electric appliances, including state-of-the-art new heat pump-based water heaters, which are very, very energy-efficient and central heating technology. In addition, additional green building technologies such as Quiet Cool Whole House Fans will be used to even reduce the heat load inside the house, so those HVAC units don't need to run as much, and the high-reflectance cool roof tiles will ensure that less heat is transferred from the roof. In summary, our goal is to make a project that is both green and beautiful for the community and to establish a strong homeowners' association regime to enforce its ongoing maintenance and operation through strong CCNRs. We want to build something that's going to last a long time and provide our homeowners with something that is of value in the community of something that will be maintained. On behalf of RC Homes, we appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you for listening to my lengthy comments. We want to give special staff, a shout-out to city staff, who've been very, very helpful in getting us this far in the project. We're happy to address your questions, and we respectfully request your support to approve the proposed project. Thank you.
I have a question for you. As part of the solar or the, the solar power, will each home have a battery as well?
The batteries are not going to be pre-installed, but the wiring will be available right there in the garage that they could.
Okay, so optional.
Yeah, optional.
In case the.
And that certainly is the direction that things seem to be going, right? So we're.
If they have no gas, I just wonder what happens in a blackout if they want to cook.
Well, you know, that's a good point, and that is the next step in all of the electrification. And, you know, the, the, you know, we're not quite that far along, but we definitely have the technology there and the wiring to be able to accommodate those batteries on an optional basis.
And are there multiple companies to choose from?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
And was that a state mandate, or did you have the option?
PV or the batteries.
But no, the, not having natural gas there.
You know, it's interesting. You're going to probably be getting a report on the next Cal Green update and building code, but it appears that in the new building code that's coming, I believe, starting next year, gas will be increasingly difficult for, to justify. So it's not yet a requirement that we, we're choosing to not have gas for both environmental reasons. But coming up soon, a lot of home builders are probably going to stop doing it because going forward, if you want to have gas appliances, new construction is going to have to provide both gas appliance stubout as well as the associated full electrical install, so that in the future, someone could swap out the gas and put in electric. So I think over time, as the economics of these things go, the state is trying to decrease the attractiveness of gas.
Hopefully, they find some lithium for the batteries.
Yes, we do have some.
Councilman Wu.
You know, Matt, I have a question for you. Okay. You know, I'm, originally, I'm trying to, okay, really like the project, but when I listen to him, he's going, you're not going to put the gas, and I'm very worried, because I joined the council government of San Gabriel, and we, all the city, we have a major issue with regarding, you have no choice, okay, about, okay, demolish the, the gas line, that people all have to use the electric, okay? And currently, we, we all know they are not reliable, okay? We, we understand we want to clean energy, but I know, and when not only one city is Berkeley, you see Berkeley, okay, Berkeley's, okay, they want, they, they have building code, they want everything electric. But West Covina, right now, currently, we don't have a leg guidelines.
Scary.
It's scary, because when I have no electricity, but I can still have a hot water with my gas tank, okay, my water tank, okay? So I can still, and I have gas, I can still cook. It happened to me numerous times, it just shut down, okay, sometime blankets shut down, okay, and the power, okay? And I can even get out, I have a gate, okay? So, so I have manually open, but I remember I have a party and I got shut down the, but at this, I can still cook for them, because I have a gas. So I know, I have a major issue with, with no gas.
Actually, on Merced, I do have family that live there, and including my street. Every year, we have a blackout, and at least one, one blackout, and it could be a few days. So I just experienced the last month, because now I have the electrical, electrical heater, and so no showering, couldn't even shower, a hot shower. So that was a little concern, but I know Merced gets hit.
All the time.
Hit with a blackout yearly, so that, that is.
I have a question for our city, okay? Do we, our city, do we have issue, okay, and that we want everybody, okay, build everything without gas line? Because gas is the cheapest, okay, of energy, and people still need to have a choice, okay? And to, to use the gas, okay, much cheaper than using electricity and electric power, okay? And myself, I want to have a choice, and I want my resident to have a choice too. So I really have a major problem with, with electric only.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Which answered the question through the chair. West Covina does not currently require this through its codes. We follow the 12 or 13 model, the uniform codes, the building code, the plumbing code, the mechanical code, the solar code, et cetera. As was stated by the applicant, the state seems to be moving in this direction, and I think the next time the code amendments are in front of city council for consideration, that's likely to be a part of it. This is a free-market choice. It's not a requirement, a regulatory requirement of the city.
So, so basically, your choice is, you don't want to have, people have a choice. You just want everything electric, including the electric stove. I, I live in the electric, all-electric, okay, home, and it's very difficult to cook. I don't know, currently, BTU has been increased, okay, with the burner, with, okay, and, oh, okay, water heater, okay? Because I have a, a water tank, and I have a tankless, and I use the gas, okay? And that gas line really give me the freedom and much cheaper. Now, I don't know how, I know, I don't know the electric water tank, how can that be efficiency?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be very expensive for, for any people, okay? I, I understand, okay, possible state want to do it, but they still have a lot of resistance, okay, and a lot of city, a lot of restaurant, okay? I think it's a long way, okay, to do it. I know they have a problem with a gas blower, okay, a gas, okay, and the, because power thing, they, they want to do it, but they, they, I'm talking about the gas, okay, into people's home, okay? And that is much cheaper energy for people to use with, okay, and cook, okay, water heaters, okay, take showers, this and that. Yeah, and, and I, I, in this clock, and I, we, we discuss about this, we strongly against the mandatory, okay, mandatory into our city to become that. We strongly against that, because we select a dictatorship, you have no choice. Everything have to be so-called the solar panel, this and that. And so, so I really don't want West Covina to become the kind of totalitarian regime, like we just force people, everybody to, to have no choice. If they want the electric, they can just cut off the gas and try everything electric. They, they have a choice, but if you don't even give them a choice, okay? And, and we, I think design is beautiful. I support the project, but.
Blackouts are the problem.
Yeah, the blackout is a problem, okay? I can still cook, because it happened to me many times, okay? So I really have a concern if we allow, okay, we approve something like this and people have no choice.
I agree. And before I go to you, Councilman Tabata, how feasible or not difficult would it be for you guys to incorporate gas?
It would be simple at this point. Our experience with it has been, we have, some of our projects we're building right now have gas, some of them don't. Our experience has been with first-time home buyers, they are typically embracing it. Often, they're younger, you know, just married or younger people and are very green-conscious, and it has resonated with them. It is actually more cost-effective for us to provide gas, because all the appliances are cheaper, and the pump that we talked about also becomes less of an issue. I think, for us, we had, there's, it really, it was, this idea has been born in our company for, I think, for two reasons. One is, we are mandated to provide solar, and when you couple solar with all-electric home, your utilities are quite cheap versus if you were just using, if you just, if you didn't have solar and you just had electric, it would be much more expensive to have an all-electric home. And the other, the other item was just, we do see it coming from a.
Question I give to you. Okay, and quickly, I would, okay, my time to you, okay? The city, for our city, do we have any building that will be electric only? Electricity only?
Prior to this one, you mean?
Do we, prior to this one, do we have any project, any development that will be nothing but?
No, not recently.
So this will be the first one. I really have a issue.
Yeah, I think, well, let's listen to Councilman Tabata, but I agree, I'd like to request gas here.
Yeah, I, I guess, I just have a different view of the, the free market. You know, they're, they're the developer who's trying to sell an item, and, and they're, they're trying to attract a certain consumer that wants all-electric, that's climate-conscious. And so, you know, I, I mean, I understand from, from a government perspective, trying to mandate things, but they're the ones who've taken the risk with their, their money to develop the project, and if they feel that developing an all-electric community will, you know, match the consumer that they're trying to attract, I mean, that's, that's the free market, right? That, you know, you, you develop a project believing that it'll be able to attract a certain customer base, and so, you know, a customer base that is climate-conscious, that wants to walk, that wants to, to bike, is who they're trying to attract. I mean, I, I live in that community. I walk by it every day, so I'm really happy to see that it's going to get developed. And, and again, as far, as far as the, the blackouts, it hasn't actually been an, an issue, and I live on Merced and Meker, by the way, if anyone wants to visit me. But I'm, I'm literally, you know, there. I drive by that every day when I take my son to school. So I, I think, I think with the concern, you know, they're the ones taking on, on the risk, so it would seem more like we're, as the government entity, actually, you know, creating a situation for the, the business owner, which, which is opposite of the, the free market. So, you know, I don't know, am I off-base on the type of consumer you're going after, or?
I, I think that, I think that's accurate. I appreciate the comments. I think we really did not intend for this to be divisive at all, this feature, and I think it's, it's critical for us to be able to deliver this community to the community, and so I would hate for what we think is an important feature to be, it's not the most critical thing in the world, and if, so I, I would hate for this to become a really divisive issue. The consumers we, that where we have it, those consumers are obviously choosing that, and they're happy with it, and, but again, we have other communities that have gas, and those are successful as well. So we do see that this is coming down the line, it's not here yet, and some of my initial comments were of, you know, what's, what are, what are homes going to look like in five years? I think that every new building code that comes out is further and further towards being sustainable and green, and our thought, our thought processes was, if our home buyers buy a home in five years, they would say, okay, I bought a home that's consistent with the design standards of today. I guess the flip side of that is, they may say, okay, this is my last chance to buy a house with gas in it. Again, and I apologize if this, if this is like a divisive issue.
No, I think.
Or we could be flexible on this.
Well, I think, I think also, if we're thinking about possible resale in the future, having, having a home that meets the standards, because as, as homes have to become all-electric, you're going to see more difficulty in buying those gas appliances and things like that. I think the, the other thing, as, as more research is coming out on the, the impact of those gas appliances on the health, especially inside and, and cooking and things like that, I know my wife and I have been looking at going all-electric with our gas range, just because when you turn it on, you know, they're seeing the, the negative health impacts. So again, yeah, I, I guess I also didn't see that it was going to be a divisive issue since, you know, you're the developer, and that's kind of what you thought would attract a certain consumer. So, thank you.
Not as it's, yeah.
Okay, I have a, I have a question, okay?
Councilman Wu.
Okay, so, so the point is this, you can have a choice, okay, to change the electric or a gas, but if they build a building and without a gas line coming in, if the person has no choice. Yeah, I understand, okay, it's a free market, this and that, but I just, okay, have a difficulty, okay, and force people to buy because we have a housing shortage, and we have, buy something possible is not what they really want, okay? And, and I want to give people a freedom, and if they don't want to use the gas line, they can just change into electric, everything electric themselves, okay? But some other people, maybe they want gas, okay? So they, they have a choice. So, so, so my, my thinking, I was surprised that this, this building, okay, want to go all the way, okay, and become like, okay, and Berkeley, and West Covina is not Berkeley. We still want to give people a choice, and when we own the project, okay, and the people can decide, okay, what they want. If they don't want the gas line, they can shut off the gas line themselves and using everything electric, and they can maybe even discuss with you, say, hey, and if I buy this building, okay, can you convert into it? My second question is, why, why is your house price range for those property? It's 39 unit in that residential area, so why is the price range?
Well, it will be market-driven, obviously. I believe today, the market would be 650,000 and.
How much?
650 and up.
650 and up?
Yes.
So what, up to how, how much?
If we had to set pricing today, I, it would probably be between 650 and 700,000.
Low 70 or high 70 or mid 70? So just 650 to 750?
The, the best comparable sales were from the Meritage Cameron 56 project, and I believe that their homes, when they finished, were selling for about 650,000.
Right.
That was about a year ago.
So you, you're a competitor, okay? So, but they have everything. They have a gas, they have everything, people have a choice. So, so anyway, this is my concern. I really don't want to, we become Berkeley, okay, and West Covina still have a choice for people, and we want builder provide choice, okay? Rather than they force people to go to what they believe, but it's not our belief.
Yeah, we, I apologize. We really were not trying to impose, you know, impose something on that. I think we would defer to the wisdom of the council on this issue and.
Yeah, and we understand it was not meant to be divisive or anything like that. My concern is just, although I like the idea of cleaner everything in the future, I worry about California's ability to meet the needs of the people until we're there yet. That's what I said, hopefully, we could find a whole lot of lithium to make the batteries we need.
Good luck.
Yeah, you know, that's, I mean, I know we have some mines in Nevada, but how fast we could extract it, who knows? I think giving people the option, as Councilman Wu said, if you guys are open to that and it sounds like it's easy enough to do, I think that would still ultimately give people the choice if you're not opposed to that.
We've, we've been driving our architects crazy to go the opposite direction. It would be, so, from a design perspective, it would be. It would be, uh, so from a design perspective, it would be actually, it would be fairly simple to do.
Okay. Councilwoman Lopez Viada.
Thank you, um, I have no problem with housing, I think it's great to have something there instead of like a, a dirt empty lot, so thank you. But, uh, I was looking at your bedrooms and bathroom ratio, why is your four bedroom only have one bathroom? That is brutal for family living there.
I think it has, um, yeah, two and a half baths.
Oh, it's, okay.
All the units have, there, all the units have a powder downstairs and two bed, two bathrooms upstairs. And the four bedroom is, you know, really, uh, could be a three bedroom plus a, uh, upstairs family room loft type of thing. Definitely they all have two and a half.
Well, they do, so, cause it, here it says one bathroom.
Okay.
Okay, so that clarifies that.
I think it listens separately.
Okay, um, and then my next question, I mean, if you ever had to live in a condo or apartment, um, parking is always brutal. Um, I know you have that 2.2 ratio where it requires, um, eight additional parking spaces, but I don't see the eight parking spaces inside here. Is it, where, where exactly is the parking?
There, it's on the screen.
So why would it be on the street side?
No, no, no.
No, it's inside.
Can you hold it over here? Some right here, there.
So it's one, do you have eight inside?
Yeah, there's eight inside.
Where, so I only see two, four, six, if that's, where's the eighth? Are those two parking spaces inside? I, it's, it's not very clear, it doesn't have that.
Laser pointer, did you have a laser pointer?
So there's two sec, there's three locations.
So that's three?
One, two, three.
Okay, there's three.
There's two, that's five.
Oh, right here.
Oh, that's three, 670.
There's three right here, three, and then two right here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause I counted eight on the outside, so I thought you were utilizing that as your additional parking.
There certainly is additional parking that is available, and that's why we do have some vesting access.
Okay, and how is the current, uh, parking situation at Van Horn Avenue? I don't know if staff can answer that or maybe our residents can answer, is it an issue currently or? Oh, here, can we, can we come to the mic so the audience can hear you from outside? You're here anyways, thank you for coming and staying for this late, late in the evening.
Thank you, um, yeah, I live in Van Horn, uh, right on the side. So, um, during the days, of course, John, people are working, it's pretty much empty, but during the weekends, uh, weekdays, at night.
Get those pictures.
It's pretty much full along, along the Van Horn on the residential side. But the, you know, where the 1912 Merced, pretty empty.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so Merced is good, but you're, and I know that there is no drive through, through Van Horn, but there's a walkway, correct? That's just, okay. All right, so, uh, parking is not going to be an issue that you're concerned of, right?
Hopefully not, but they know, 39 units, so, hopefully, but they have their own parking garage.
Okay, thank you, and now reference to the garage parking, um, will the HOA make it mandatory to make sure that that is strictly for parking and not storage?
Absolutely, yeah.
And the garages, they have the windows for you guys to view, or is it just?
Do we have, uh, I need to, yes, that would be.
Visually as a walkthrough instead of having to bother them to look inside?
Yeah, I don't recall what is on our elevations if it has windows or not, but we could certainly add that, that's a good way to, uh.
To enforce, make sure, okay.
Councilman Wood.
I, I'm not trying to raise more problem for you, okay, besides the gas, electricity, okay? And, but I really prefer that people have a choice, okay, it is my strong belief, okay? We don't mandate the people and then if they want, but the question I want to ask, okay, about assistant, uh, dumping program, okay? And can you increase a little bit to help more of the home buyer, okay, owner occupy willing to come in and to buy your property? I think this is kind of good for you and good for the, uh, promotion. But at the same time, it will help a lot of, uh, young couple, okay, they, they have a true income, but they really hard time to, to save, okay, and, uh, and, but they have a good income, okay? So, so I think they can qualify, uh, with current even 5% interest rate. But I think they have a, they need some help with, uh, the dumping assist program. So if you only have like $50,000, okay, and it's really, I don't know, can you increase a little bit to help, okay, if some of the, uh, young couple to move into our city with your project?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a great program, actually, that you guys have, uh, come up with. Um, and, uh, to be able, there's affordable housing where there's restrictions on people able to appreciate their homes and enjoy all the benefits of it.
Right.
Um, and we were, um, that, uh, similar question was asked at Planning Commission, so we spent time discussing that. And we would be, um, happy to, uh, the staff had recommended 50,000, we'd be happy to go to 75,000 if that would please the council.
Would be 100,000 too much for you?
Um, I think we could do 100, I think we could.
You could do 100,000 dollars? Oh.
Going one, so.
I'm, I got going one, going two, going three, okay, but thank you so much to help our first time home buyer. We really want, okay, and they have a chance to own the home. We need people to own home, okay, and, uh, and then hold later on, they can kind of like me, back in 1989, I own my first house, then gradually I can move up my life, okay? So we want encourage people to own their property, still, especially your beautiful project. The only problem I have is like, uh, hopefully you can give them the choice, okay? And they can go all electric or go, okay, but at least the choice, okay, for them, okay? Because, uh, with gas, I think would be cheaper, okay, for the, the utility bill. So, so you disagree?
Again, we're, we're happy to try to accommodate the council on it.
Yeah, I, I, this is.
There's no line in the.
No, I understand, I understand.
Line in the sand.
I understand you want to do the good thing, you want to do.
It is surprising, I judge, why shape it, because actually with these new heat pump, uh, water heaters and with the PV panels, it actually is very, very cost effective, but again, I understand your, your concerns about choice and respect those.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I think to give people choice, okay, and, uh, not put all the egg in one basket, okay? And hopefully people can, okay, if something go down, they can still have something they can rely on. Uh, it happened to me, living West Covina for almost 40 years, happened all the time, okay? Then I have a, at least have a, can cook, can heat up the thing with, uh, it's not everything shut down, okay? And, uh, you know, can I get out the house, but at least you can cook, okay, and eat something, okay? So, so, and you have no microwave because no power. So, so again, it, it's really, uh, went through so many time, okay? And so this is the concern I have when the, the state government want to force all the city to go in that kind of route. But don't forget, the politics is not forever and the, the people shift on left and right, okay? And all this, you never know what next, okay, will be, but I understand you try to be event, but maybe it's not what people want. This is kind of a concern I have, but, but thank you so much for 100,000 dollars. I really appreciate we present a first time home buyer, okay? And then, and, uh, I don't know, okay, regarding the gas would be an issue to you guys, I have some issues.
I mean, I, I personally, you always want a plan B and in case of an emergency and when things happen. Um, and I know blackouts occur in quadrants, um, this is particular in Merced and Shadydale, which is like really close, close by there. So, um, and so we just want to make sure that they, if things do happen, like I, I just had a blackout that was out for three straight days and that was tough and that was just a few months ago. And I live, um, close by Merced in, uh, California. But I just wanted to make sure that the option is there, that they're able to, um, in case emergency does happen, that they can use their stove to warm up, um, hot water or anything like that, especially during the winter time or, you know, for any of that reasons.
Sounds silly for me to say this after the fact, but I had never actually thought about the blackout issue.
Ah, happened all the time.
Yeah, it's common.
Yeah, we have it, it's common, and I don't know, and probably that's a question that I should ask our city because certain areas have blackouts, uh, more often than other areas. Um, so if that's something that the city can look into, I, I know, you know, when they hit the transformer, I think there's one transformer there on Merced, that sometimes the car crashes and it, it causes some blackout.
Edison Rev right there.
Oh, yeah, that's perfect.
I, I know her very well.
Yes, and then some, you know, with grids and everything, so I, I do notice that certain areas of the city gets hit much more often than other parts of the city and, and that is something that I like our city to, cause I, I get impacted, so I, I feel it. And since it was recent for me, um, yeah, that's why I thought of that with, uh, and the gas does help. So, yeah, I, I agree with the gas situation.
Thank you.
As long as you get the parking situation down with the HOA and confirm so it doesn't hinder our other residents that lives in the area and, um, and that, yeah, garage window to make sure it's enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, Councilman, anything, okay, anything else you guys would like to add? I'd like to continue with public input.
Please get it all the way, yeah.
Thank you, i- is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project?
Yes, Mayor, I do have speaker slips along with what I've placed on your dais, you have two, um, two letters, uh, in support.
Thank you, I see those.
Our first speaker is Antonio.
Mayor, uh, cons, council staff, uh, just want to say, uh, simple, uh, it's pretty quick. I do support the project, the turn in units and, uh, you know, they will help the community, uh, with the housing. Uh, also the beautification of the landscape and the dwellings around that neighbor, around that, uh, neighborhood. Um, in addition, I would like to ask, uh, West Covina if they can maintain the street, especially Van Horn, if they can keep the, the street cleaning, you know, and, uh, regulate the, enforce the street, that would be nice.
Yeah, uh, we, we will have our city staff look into that, see what the schedule is and make sure that, that, um, the street sweeping crew is passing through there.
Thank you.
I have another speaker, Corazon.
She's okay. Hello.
Hi, uh, Mayor and Councilman, Councilman and everyone here. Oh, I just want to say, um, like I, like, um, Antonio said, I support, um, the, um, members of, um, having, putting up, uh, uh, housing in our, in our neighborhood. So I think this is going to be it, I have no major concerns, just, you just want to, uh, make sure that, uh, that the street, you know, will be kept clean and everything's in order, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Mayor, I also have, um, uh, residents who did not wish to speak but give their support, um, Ms. Esther Sapien and Sandy Beldrade, so they've also in support. I have a speaker card for Lorena Cardenas, she didn't note whether she was in favor or opposed.
Okay, is she here?
Doesn't look like it. Yeah, she was sitting over there.
Oh, okay.
She's not here.
Time got to her. Okay, uh, and, is there anyone else, uh, and she didn't specify in favor?
She did not specify.
Anyone else in favor? We've exhausted that, anyone who would like to speak against this project?
I do have a speaker card that is neutral and a speaker card who was against.
Let's go with neutral next, please.
Mike Greenspan.
Okay, um, somebody left their I love Irwindale button, it's not a bad community, uh, but I, it's not mine. Anyway, there's a, I did take some notes because I almost became a homeowner, not in this state, of course, because of high housing costs, but it was, uh, in metro Atlanta. And one of the things I noticed was a square footage of these units because I would have had something 1,311 square feet, so, you know, three bedroom, two bath and the 1,325, the 1,375 and the 1,475. I mean, that would seem to be fair, of course, I was going to have mine on a 2.2 acre lot, oh, no, excuse me, on a half acre lot. The county had built stuff in 1980, Paulding County, Georgia, which is northwest of Six Flags. And when, when they built stuff in 2004, they cut down the acreage size, but half an acre was still not bad. So, um, but other than that, I realize land being what it is, one of the things that, that about electric versus gas, can't we just tell people, hey, go buy a generator? I know, if you're going to build something that's 650,000 to 700,000, what, it would be comparatively pennies on the dollar to get the generator to protect your investment. Um, somebody once took me to a store where they sold all these exotic fish, fish that were between 750 and a thousand dollars. And I told the person, well, don't go buying that aquarium while you live in an apartment, wait till you one day get a house so you can have a generator, so you won't be having thousands of dollars go down the drain by an electrical outage because those fish were very expensive, the person was lying. So there's, I grew up in Florida, a lot of people have generators because hurricanes come through and you're lucky to get your electricity back in a week. So the generator does play a very important role. Couple of things, are you going to have drought tolerant plants? Are there any solar panels on the roof? That would cut down on, on electrical use, um, heating the water, what about generators? Oh, full parking spaces or compact spaces? One of the big pet peeves I have with zoning and land use, well, they're going to build a project and it's going to have 10 parking spaces, but the 10 parking spaces are really 10 compact spaces. De facto, five SUV spaces. Are these parking spaces good enough to put one SUV in a parking space? I mean, I, I know it's a loophole in zoning and land use, but before we really go that route of the blunder, be sure the parking space is big enough, don't be like a Fisherman's Wharf, I had a Cadillac years ago, I parked at Fisherman's Wharf and the Cadillac went over both lines in the parking space. Be sure it's big enough. Um, as far as other things, as I say, solar panels would be nice, the other thing, financing. My house deal fell through over 150 basis points dispute. They baited me with a juicy low interest rate, switched me to a higher one. And the other thing was, okay, the first mortgage is 80%, then you have a second mortgage of 20%. That's not the rate of interest, but for the amount of the loan. So then you avoid mortgage insurance, which is very costly and knocks people right out of qualification. Of course, they're changing that, and by the time it was finished, they baited me with that juicy stuff only to find out, oh, well, you're going to have to put 10% down, it's going to be 90% of it financed, getting mortgage insurance. And they were using everything in the book, I even had my parents offered a cosign for me because I was moving without a job, but with high 700 VICO scores. And they found a way to get my parents off the thing, so their excuse was to charge me more. So I, we want to be certain that that interest rate is good, I always tell people, keep that apartment for an extra month just in case something funny happens, like happened in my case. And I wasn't there with all my moving stuff ready to move into a screw you deal. So I just want to be certain that the people get a good deal and tell them to get some generators if we're going to be on electric.
Thank you, now we have someone opposed to the project?
Yes, Herman.
Real conversation here, Mr. Mayor. Let's be real, $650,000 for some brand new two-story townhome style units? But what is a townhome style? It could be anything. The idea is, does it really fit the community? Based on those pictures you showed, the community is, is structured like an old community, like the rest of the outside or the outskirts of a small town of West Covina. Rundown, I know that, I grew up in Boyle Heights. Good shit with bad shit. What idiots built around that? But again, I'm, I'm sure the land was cheap for those 39 units. Now here's the, the tremendous problem here. If they're so conservative and worried about green, why don't they want to provide solar panels? And why do you want to tear up a street later on during the time that Mr. Tony Wu continue to push? Where's the fucking gas line? I'd rather have a gas line there so that just in case people say, you know what, these rolling blackouts are fucking. rolling blackouts are fucking up our, our livelihood and our enjoyment to our new home, because I surely would feel that way, knowing that I bought a piece of shit in a nice, small town in West Covina. So I wouldn't buy it. I would rather sell my shit, move the fuck out of West Covina and out of California where Gavin Newsom's created this shit-hole of housing crisis, and live somewhere where I can pleasantly enjoy my old age and tell the world to fuck off. So, again, uh, only four people participated, and tonight you had two individuals from that neighborhood come here and, "Oh gee, I agree." Well, guess what? What about the people who can't afford that? This young generation, they're in and out of, of homes so, so quick. I got people living where I live, moving into garages and living in what their two-story, uh, parents' homes, fucking up my neighborhood. Where's the parking? Where's the parking off of that shit-hole Van Horn Avenue? Off of Mercedes, that's not enough? And besides, where's the ADA van pool parking for a person who's disabled on this complex? Was that added in and implemented under the 2010 standard ADA compliance? I didn't hear not one fucking word about that in these 39 units. Is there gonna be one facility open to a handicapped person, so that there's an elevator to one of the structures where they can maybe have a potential right to buy and purchase a nice home in West Covina? You think about it. 'Cause I know what it's like to own property, I know what it's like to fix property, I know what it's like to help my parents save her property from douchebags that try to steal it right under her hands. And for that reason, that's why this is a topic of interest for me, 'cause I'm sick and tired of seeing homelessness, not just in West Covina, but in this fucked-up state of California. And so, yes, we do need 39 units, plus some, but these gentlemen, the two that spoke about their new adventure into, um, housing attached to stories, guess what? Bring it up into compliance, ADA compliance, and in the regulations that allow people to actually afford it. Can you afford a new home like this, Dario? No. Mommy and daddy probably gave you something like that, huh? See? I know that.
Could afford 10 of them.
Well, damn, this idiot's pretty good then, because I'd rather live in one, knowing that I don't have to pay the douchebag governor or the dumb bitch Hilda Celeste and the tax people any more monies than what I've already made and sustained in my lifetime. And that's the reason why we have so many homeless people and veterans who can't afford a goddamn fucking house for this kind of money. And you want to bunch them into a, a, a 350 unit like Janice Hahn would do, or that dumb bitch Rubio, the senator, who don't give a fuck about homelessness, don't give a fuck about people, like Karen Bass. Don't give a rotten fucking shit about people having a home or a roof over their head. So, yes, we need drought-tolerant plants, 'cause we're in a climate where there's not enough fucking water.
Would the applicant like to rebut any testimony offered in opposition?
I want to thank the City Council for its service. Yes, we, um, no, seriously, uh, we are providing solar panels.
Every, every single one has, right?
Every single house has.
That's what I thought you said.
The entire project is ADA accessible, including van, uh, ADA van parking. These are all things that, uh, the Building Department will insist upon because they're in the, and this is California State Building Code. Um, and then as to the landscaping, uh, the state is now enforcing a model, uh, Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, which we have to comply with, so of course, the landscape will be very drought-tolerant. I think those were the facts that I could address. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I shall now close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and ask council for discussion. Councilman Wu.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the project. Okay, I want to thank the generosity of $100,000 for the first-time homebuyer or the homebuyer for the assisted, okay, down payment program, and, uh, add on the amended with option, we need to have a guest, okay, to be there, and then this is my motion to approve.
I'll second the motion along with the parking situation as well. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you, and I have a first and a second.
Through the chair if I can, Mayor.
Yes.
This motion is to approve Resolutions 2022-40 through 2022-43. Correct. We'll have a second motion to approve.
Approve with the amended with $100,000, and, okay, and then add the gas for people have a choice.
And windows for the garage.
Thank you.
All right, so for the first, um, for the first vote, roll call, please.
Councilmember Tabataba.
Although disappointed for consumers who want to live in a green neighborhood, I will vote yes.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
I'm glad that the residents have options, so thank you, it's an aye, yes.
Mayor Costellanos.
Yes.
Motion passes for the Resolutions 40 with, uh, Mayor Protem Diaz absent. I now need a motion to, uh, approve Ordinance Number 2499.
Thank you, and do we need a second, a motion on the next part?
I need a motion and a second.
Okay.
I'll motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, roll call, please.
Ordinance Number 2499, ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving zoning change number 221-02 and adopting the Grove at Merced specific plan at 1912 West Merced Avenue. Councilmember Tabataba.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Um, beside vote, I have a quick question for Matt. Okay, if we approve, can you come up? How soon you can break ground?
Uh, very soon. We prepare to break ground, uh, in the first half of August.
Uh, August of this year?
Yes.
So, so city will help him to, uh, we need housing, okay, and, uh, times as soon, okay, for everything. We want to thank you to come to West Covina, okay, and to build, uh, housing for our residents.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, so my, my vote would be aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
I wanted to thank them and to make sure you take care of the residents on Van Horn and that they, you listen to whatever their needs are, so, uh, thank you again, aye.
Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
Item passes 40 with Mayor Protem Diaz absent.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming and sticking around for that. Takes us to item number 11, establishing underground utility district number eight on Merced Avenue, Rule 28, and it's a public hearing. Will city clerk, will the city clerk verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice was given, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on establishing the underground utility district number eight on Merced Avenue. There will be a presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Uh, city manager, who will present the staff report?
Assistant City Manager Morales will give this report.
Thank you.
Good evening again. So, the item before you tonight is, um, the Rule 28 program, it's, um, for undergrounding utilities. The Rule 28A is a set of policies and procedures established by the California Public Utility Commission to regulate and fund the conversion of overhead electric equipment to underground facilities, um, which is called undergrounding. And so, um, the city is proposing, um, with Southern California Edison, to create District Number Eight along Merced in the purple area as seen in the aerial above. Um, West Covina currently has a balance of 1.3 million. Um, Southern California Edison would be, um, responsible for contracting out the work and doing the work, um, for undergrounding the utilities. They are estimated to start construction in 2023, um, with a completion, um, 12 months after. The proposed location for the, uh, underground district, um, sorry. The city targeted West Merced Avenue to the following reasons: Undergrounding will enhance safety and have a positive aesthetic impact on the area; the estimated project timing does not conflict with any planned street rehabilitation work or other capital improvement projects in the area; and the proposed location is adjacent to public places, which includes the West Covina Unified School District building, Edgewood Sports Complex, and the, uh, Orange Wood Skate Park that's north of the facility. If approved by the City Council, staff will initiate the process with Southern California Edison and utility companies to proceed with the underground district. It is estimated, um, as I mentioned, that they will start construction in 2023 and take 12 months to complete. And just for reference, these are the utility lines that would be, uh, undergrounded. So, staff, and we think we have a rep from Southern California Edison, if you have questions.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions of staff by the council first? Okay, no questions, um, then would the SCE rep like to add anything? None at this time, okay. Um, Madam Assistant City Clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning establishing the underground district utility number eight on?
I have not, Mayor.
None, okay. And, um, any questions about that? No?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, why is, is this the start? I mean, well, first question is, um, do we have any underground utilities throughout the city, or is this gonna be the first one?
No, there was another one on Merced, I would think it was District Number Four that has already been completed.
So this is the second one?
I'm not sure if this is only the second one. I know of one other, but I can get that information, I just don't have it with me tonight.
And are we transitioning from above-ground to below? I mean, is, are we?
That's the point of the district, is to go underground.
Okay, and then, is that the reason why the black, and now that we're talking about blackouts and we're talking about Merced, um, I know sometimes they said they hit the transformers. Is the transformer, there's a transformer there? Uh, you're waving, you're nodding your head. Can you go up to the mic so they could hear? Sorry. Otherwise, the audience out there won't be able to hear you. Thank you. If, good evening, uh, Mayor, councilmembers and staff.
Marissa, could you give your name for the?
Sure. Marissa Castro Salvati, I'm the Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. How are you, Councilman? Uh, in, in terms of your question about, uh, transformers, so if there is an above-ground transformer, those will then have to be created into a vault, so things that you see out there, the poles, uh, anything that's above-ground, everything will now be underground. Uh, also remember that all the other utilities that are in existence, like cable, uh, telecom, those too will also be underground, so the other utilities will follow us once we finish the trenching. Got it, okay, thank you. So, okay, so the transformers, is, all transformers are gonna go underground as well? Is there? However they're going to build it, whatever they have in that area, if there are some above-ground transformers, they should be building it underground. I believe there's a transformer on Merced and near Shady Dell, right? Is that? I'm not really sure. This one goes from where to where on Merced?
It's just in front of the school district and in between Edgewood in front of the school district.
Oh, okay.
It's just that blue rectangle.
Yeah, it's, it's just a small piece from whatever that blue area is. I'm not really sure as far as what kind of facilities there are there, but I know the poles will all be eliminated. Okay, okay, thank you. And some of the transformers may also be on the pole itself. Got it, okay, thank you.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I have a two quick question.
Yes.
How soon we can, going to have entire city underground with all your power pool?
You're talking about this project?
No, about entire West Covina, especially our neighborhood, so when we can get all this ugly, powerful go underground.
Yeah. Well, as, as you know, each year, the city gets an allocated amount of 90,000, uh, plus every year, so once you accumulate, uh, the amount, that's when you can start looking for other projects within, uh, the area itself, but.
So about every 10 years, we could do a little strip like?
Twenty foot, twenty foot, okay, underground, okay. And the second question will be, uh, the blackout, okay, the shutdown. It, it happened to me a couple days ago, I can't even get out of the house because suddenly it just, okay, no power, so, uh, without even warning. So what happened? Why is, happened recently so often?
Well, it.
And what can improve to get, at least give us some kind of, uh, warning shot?
Well, it, it really depends on, like, for example, I know earlier she had mentioned that her neighborhood gets car-hit pull, uh, a lot. In terms of the outage that you experience, uh, I can find out, 'cause we don't know, unplanned outages can either.
It's entire, including the Mesa Elementary, uh, the traffic line, because.
It's a certain circuit that probably is, uh, is problematic in, in that area, whether it's critters, whether it's failed, uh, equipment.
At morning 10 o'clock, there would be a couple hours shut down, and then entire, like, a school neighborhood, I see no traffic, see no this and that, okay, from my window, so, so, uh, so it will, without any notice, okay, at all, so, and, but, by the way, it happened pretty often, so.
So typically, if it's an emergency or a repair outage, uh, customers will not get any kind of notice ahead of time, 'cause we don't know if our, uh, equipment will fail. But if we do have maintenance outages, that's when you typically will get, uh, a notice, letting you know that we will be taking out the, the area.
You know, we just talked about the housing they want to build, and then it may possible it's a stay, want to go to two-lit route, but, but my point is, if we don't give a reliable energy from Edison to be, people can be, like, losing all the energy, the power, then I have no problem, okay, if, if the reliable source with a cheaper cleaner, with solar panel, but when our currently, we're still not there yet, okay, we still have a lot of issue, okay, and the transformer burned down with a wildfire, so they need to have been improved, major go either underground and make sure we don't have all those hazardous situation happen to, and not reliable, okay, energy to our community, that I understand, I hope you understand what I'm talking about.
No, I, I do understand.
Thank you, because we talking, on the car E and A, we talk about this all the time, right? By big mouth, okay, so, so, so you gotta have to get this trust from the resident, then we will move into that direction, but the trust and reliability still not there yet.
If you could let me know the outage that you're talking about, and I'll, I'll talk to, uh, the city manager.
Okay, I have your number, I'll just send to you. Okay, thank you, Marissa.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry. Can, can the city or, or request, um, to actually pull a record of outages, um, that we get throughout the city and how often, and, um, you know, certain, like, in my area, certain transformers that keeps getting hit, I mean, to a certain extent, you know, can they do something differently about it, or barricade, or just anything to?
I think you've got the best person here who.
I know, that's why I was, so in terms of your question about, uh, certain circuits or certain areas that do have outages, uh, I know we do our little annual, uh, circuit reliability that I share the report with, uh, the city manager, uh, and we basically gives an overview of the city's, uh, specific circuits. Uh, it is a document that you can actually, um, get online through our SCE.com, which is our reliability reports, and if there is a need for us to, uh, to do a presentation, we can, but we do the presentation with the city manager, uh, as a staff, um, meeting that we do, and. I mean, I, I'd like to, I know it's too early on, but like a council request, or mother may I, to have this, uh, circuit grid or anything, and a presentation, uh, for the residents to understand what we're going through, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we could agendize that. How, how much time would you need to prepare something like that?
I mean, anywhere from, quickly go through the, the deck, uh, and the deck also includes, uh, our wildfire mitigation plan, uh, presentation as well, so.
Maybe second meeting in June?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, really quick, okay, and the E and A, we discuss about this, because, uh, when the, uh, okay, wildfire, uh, and the prevention, the, the, is blanket shutdown entire area. So that is why we talk about this, this is very problematic, okay, that's a huge area, and they so worry about, like, for example, July, August, you, you, you wait and see, it's going to shut down, okay, and. Entire area to avoid potentially wildfire and then become, become very common that they blanket shut down. So people need the dialysis, they need the electricity they, they don't have. So maybe, uh, the shareware is right, we need a generator for some people if they need some kind of, uh, electricity all the time for the medical issue.
So when you do have what you're referring to, councilman, the public safety power shut off, there is a. Correct. It is part of our mitigation plan. Uh, we make sure that you are given plenty of time ahead of time whether or not a certain circuit, uh, will get, um, shut down. Now, in the city of, uh, West Covina, you have, uh, a certain number of circuits, uh, that are identified as a PSPS circuit. So not all of the circuits in West Covina are, are, uh, targeted as PSPS. Um, so that's also available on the circuit reliability. Will it show that which ones are the PSPS?
Since we have a hillside, we have all this wooded area, we transformer, so potentially West Covina, we have some area will be blanket shut down too, based on what you just say.
Depending on if we activate PSPS.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
So in regards to this project, um, how many residents will be affected? Uh, is their power, how long will the power be lost? Um, how long does that project take? Well, I know you said it takes one year, but start of construction. But, uh, as for the area of who's affected by this, yeah, they, who would be?
Uh, it really depends on what the area is. So if they're having the, the rule twenty eighteen, and it's going to be coming out of our Covina district, who will be working on it, uh, they'll be the ones to coordinate and make sure that whoever is impacted throughout the area. Um, I'm not sure if we do a dear neighbor letter, uh, to just let them know that there's construction going on. Uh, that's typically some of the things that we do to let the residents and the customers know, uh, that we are doing any kind of construction in the area with a dear neighbor letter. Um, so that if they're not impacted, you know, they'll still know about it. They may be impacted with an outage, depending on when they start really taking down the lines and taking down the, the poles. I mean, it's not going to be like, you're going to be out of power immediately. They're just doing the construction right now in the design.
Okay, I'm just concerned about power, how long they're without power and the radius of how many.
No, I mean, there, there will be no power outages because we're just trying to first do the construction. Right now is the design phase. Once council adopts the resolution that's presented tonight, our team of rule twenty eighteen will look into how they design it and how they're going to work closely, uh, with the city. This is your project. We're here to just help move it along. Uh, this is something that we will work closely with the other utilities as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so if all goes well, according to plan, no one should have a lapse in electricity, correct?
No, there shouldn't until we, you know, we work with, you know, the plans that we have, everything on the ground, transfer the, the facilities underground. You may have, you know, just a regular maintenance outage, um, in the area.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any, any more question? No?
And I wanted to say hello. I think you're one of the councilmembers I have not met. I've, I know the three councilmembers here. But it's, it's nice to meet you finally.
Yeah, pleasure to meet you too, and, and, and thank you for, uh, putting people at ease by saying it would just be a maintenance shortage. I'm, I'm sure a lot of people were, were thinking like, uh, the councilwoman, that maybe we'd have long outages. But, um, really looking forward to, uh, the undergrounding there on Merced. It's, it's an area that where a lot of kids are and a lot of people walk their dogs and it's, uh, really, um, wild traveled path. And so to not have those wires and things like that, um, it's going to be a benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, is there anyone who would like to speak or comment on this item?
I have one speaker card, mayor.
Okay.
Carmen?
Let's get to the bottom of the problem. Bottom of the problem is supply and demand. That's why you don't see California or Edison and any of those electricity companies pushing you harder, stroking you harder to get solar panels. Because again, there's no balance of how to engage what you save as to what you make in saving electricity. So the vaults and the grid is off balance. So that's what causes outages, right? Wouldn't you think so? You know, if I have a, too much of a positive going into one positive area, it's called an overload. What happens during that overload? A short circuit and the dumb niggers getting electricity for how many hours? And my ice cream in my refrigerator melts and now I can't have no fucking chocolate ice cream. And the reason is because we've failed to provide adequate supply and adequate equipment to prevent this. That's why, Wu, 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 Wu. Get it? That's why. Maybe in your country where you out there came from, you had to make sure you use less electricity. Here in the United States, we're dumbasses. We plug in items left and right. We don't give a fuck. Matter of fact, I got three refrigerators and why? Because they sit in storage. Because I save energy. But the rest of us dumbasses have one in your garage, one outside in your backyard, one in your man cave or bitch cave, and then you got the one in the house. All three, four different appliances running on a different infrastructure. That's the reason why the lady speaker before me couldn't really explain the details as to why, again, this excessive demand of electricity keeps creating rolling blackouts or outages. And I just answered it for you people. I just answered it. Because look at Tesla's cars. If one battery goes bad, the whole car runs bad. That's the reason why America is doomed, because we don't fucking care about America anymore. To make it great, to make it efficient, to make the supply and demand run the way it should run this country when it first started back in the days, and I'll use for an example Ford. Assembly line. Motivation. Think outside the box, Mr. Dario. Don't lose hair, but gain hair by knowledge. Knowledge is power. See, that's why I still got my hair, because I have knowledge. Soon my hair will turn white like Moses, and I'll probably one day be able to charge electricity from my hands like Tesla and burn my ass out of this existence of the fucking madness of world over electricity. That's the reason. So you know what? Maybe it's aesthetic. We want to just remove those poles and the shitty lines that basically are in our view. And, and the people there said, you know what? We agree with the, you know, the city. Let's just take them down, run them underground, fuck it. But they don't realize it's going to cost money. It's going to cost money. But don't get me wrong, aesthetically, it looks great. I hate looking at poles that the electricity people don't come out and manage properly. They're leaning over, they're falling over, trees go into them. Nobody, nobody bothers to come out and do maintenance. And that's the other reason why we have failed equipment, rollouts, blackouts, and lack of prevention. Am I right? Look at the crowd here tonight. I'm the only asshole speaking about this supply and demand that we all need. And I will give you back your last six seconds. Thank you.
Do we have any more speaker cards?
No speaker cards, mayor.
No one hiding under their seats? I would be.
Willst.
So, any further questions of staff?
Um, no.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion to approve?
Uh, I'm going to move the motion to.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to departmental regular matters. Item number twelve.
Hey. Probably hearing.
Consideration of ordinance amending the contract between the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City of West Covina to implement cost sharing in accordance with section two zero five one six of the California Government Code and the MOU between the City of West Covina and the West Covina POA. Mr. Carmody, who will present? Well, it's obvious.
We have our, um, HR Director Helen Tran. Thank you, Helen, for being here.
Thank you, Helen. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff, members of the public. Helen Tran, Director of HR, West Management. Uh, the ordinance before you is pretty much, uh, back in January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. City and City of West Covina Police Officers Association ratified a three-year MOU agreement. And, uh, so as part of the process of, um, agreeing to a three percent additional cost sharing to the Calpers, uh, cost sharing, we have to, uh, first, back in April fifth, we, the council adopted the resolution of intent, introduction of the ordinance. And then the POA conducted a vote, um, between April sixth to twenty-nine, and it was approved. Then, uh, now we're officially adopting the ordinance, and then we can start the process to start the cost sharing, which would occur thirty-first day after the adoption of this ordinance. That's why we're here before you.
Thank you. Question, Councilman Wu?
Uh, no, it's just, okay, quickly, a comment, okay, so basically the POA approve, okay, with MOU for the next three years, so the, the cost sharing from nine percent to twelve percent.
Correct. So they agreed to increase the cost sharing from nine percent to twelve percent for a three-year, um, MOU agreement.
And, and, and I just want to, uh, have my deepest appreciation from you and the POA to come up this agreement, okay, and it's really to help the city future for this retirement fund. That, that hopefully with this old cost sharing, that we will be, have a very healthy, uh, future finance so we can pay for their retirement. But they're willing to pitch in, and, uh, I want to thank POA, and, uh, this is a big achievement. So I want to move the motion approve, and thank you so much, Helen, and, uh, happy Asian Heritage Month.
Thank you.
I'll second.
A first and a second. Thank you very much, Helen, for all your hard work with everything like this. And can we have a roll call, please?
Before roll call, I need to read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Ordinance number two nine, excuse me, ordinance number two four nine six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of West Covina and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. I have a motion by Councilman Wu, second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General items on the agenda. Do we have council member reports, requests, or comments? Anybody? Well, just as, uh, discussed earlier, Councilwoman Lopez Viado would like to have Edison present a report to us on the second meeting of June, and you could just provide detailed direction when you, whenever you want.
Thank you. I mean, that would be perfect because it's right before summer, when peak time, high usage comes through. Um, you know, uh, which brings me to another, um, question. Can they also add? I know we have been receiving letters that there's these tiers and changes, and it's, it gets a little bit confusing, um, for all the residents of what the changes are. Can we also implement that as well?
Through the chair, we'd be happy to include that. We were really grateful that Marissa came tonight. The rule twenty staff was unavailable, and so the big boss stepped up and pinch it, which was helpful for us. And we'll, um, ask her when she brings out the annual report of system reliability to also address these questions.
These, these letters have been coming out recently.
They are confusing.
And, and I, yeah.
Gives you options and.
And we don't know what the options are, so I mean, if I'm confused, I'm pretty sure there's many residents who don't understand what they're getting into signing up, opting out. So we'd like that, um, to be put in that. So thank you very much, mayor.
Can do so, yes.
Any other comments, concerns? No? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.